Get this local school district as a Purple Heart district. So what I'd like to do is give you a little presentation regarding that if you don't mind. The Purple Heart has the historical distinction of being the first American decoration awarded to the common soldier and the oldest military decoration in the world at present use. Rooted in America's struggle for independence, the Purple Heart decoration was created by General George Washington. As established in his general orders of August 7th, 1782, the decoration was to have a figure of a heart in purple cloth or silk edged with a narrow lace or binding and be awarded for instances of unusual gallantry, extraordinary fidelity, and essential service. After America's war for independence, the Purple Heart was lost to history until 1931, when a search of General Washington's historical papers directed by Army Chief of Staff General Douglas MacArthur rediscovered the Purple Heart decoration. With its rediscovery, the Army reinstated and redesigned the Purple Heart decoration on February 22nd, 1932, as a combat award exclusively presented to members of the Armed Forces of the United States wounded by an enemy instrument of war and posthumously to the next of kin and the name of those killed in action or who died of wounds received in action in commemoration of the bicentennial anniversary of George Washington's birth. Since its reinstatement in 1932, over 1.7 million servicemembers have been awarded the Purple Heart. Today, there are more than 500,000 living Purple Heart recipients, with approximately 150 residing in Citrus County. Designation as a Purple Heart School District is reserved for those districts that have exhibited noteworthy patriotic support of our nation's armed forces and its veterans. Given the district's four Rs: educational philosophy of reading, writing, arithmetic, and respect; for our country and its veterans, strong support of the JROTC program; annual participation in the Veterans in the Classroom program; Veterans Day Parade and Veterans Food Drive; annual luncheon for veterans; and planned Wall of Honor honoring the fallen in the district headquarters building, Chapter 776, and the Department of Florida Military Order of the Purple Heart is privileged to invite the Citrus County School District Board to approve the district's designation as the first Purple Heart School District in the state of Florida and the nation.
Wow.
To be designated a Purple Heart School District, seven actions are requested. First, the school board approves the district's designation as a Purple Heart School District. Second, the district prepares a proclamation designating it as a Purple Heart School District. Third, the district will permanently display the Purple Heart School District proclamation in a common area of the district headquarters building. Fourth, the district acquires a Purple Heart flag. Fifth, district schedules and arranges for designation ceremony and invites local government officials and community leaders to this event. And sixth, district annually commemorates the anniversary of George Washington's birthday on February 22nd. And last, district annually flies the Purple Heart flag at district headquarters building a minimum of two occasions: February 22nd, the anniversary of the birth of Purple Heart-created General George Washington; and August 7th, the anniversary of the first awarding of the decoration in 1782. The district is also encouraged to fly the Purple Heart flag on or other patriotic holidays or occasions as it deems appropriate. In closing, we hope you will accept our invitation to become the first Purple Heart School District in the state of Florida and the nation to honor America's fallen heroes and wounded warriors by making a motion and approving the Citrus County School District's designation as a Purple Heart School District.
Mr. Georgeman, I move to accept the invitation from Chapter 776 and the Department of Florida Military Order of Purple Heart to become the first school district in the nation to be designed a Purple Heart School District and approve the proclamation.
Okay. I'm moving by Ms. Bryant and by Ms. Powers that we approve the designation, Purple Heart School District. Is that okay with you? [inaudible]
Absolutely. I was gonna say, would you please do that?
Is there any discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you. We are so honored. We really are so honored, and it's our blessing to have you here with us today and to allow us to enjoy this wonderful designation.
At this time, if we'd like, if you'd come forward, we're gonna present you with a Purple Heart flag that you're gonna pull on your forehead.
For all of us? Let's take a vote? Okay, all of us in favor, please say aye. All aye, all opposed, motion carries five zero. Okay.
Good job, Leslie.
Thank you, sir. Would you mind?
Sure. Do you want to call? Yeah. My favorite color. Well, here, come on. Now you behave. You behave. I want to do a jerk. Okay, one for me. You gonna do one more? One, two, three. Sorry, y'all. I'm glad my camera did not look to help me out on that one. Okay, one, two, three. There we go. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Yes, I did a good time. Are you sure? Are you sure?
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
A Purple Heart. And then email to me.
Take care. Take care.
Board members, a couple of things before we begin. One, I wanna thank Superintendent Hemmell for helping facilitate that today, and I wanna share with you all something that the district, I think you all knew, participates in providing an appreciation dinner and luncheon for the veterans in the classroom. And this year, Ms. Hemmell had provided, and I'm gonna, if you haven't seen it, she provided this card, and in the center of the card, which says, "In recognition and sincere appreciation for your contribution to Citrus County Schools Veteran in the Classroom Program." And it has all of the armed services, and then there is a special pin that she provided to them, Veterans in the Classroom, and it gave this year's date on it. Well, I was told by a former staff member and retired Navy Captain, Thomas Holmes, who is also the president of MOA, of a story that had took place, and that was that there was one of their veterans that had become ill and was not able to get there that day and was extremely disappointed, and somehow that information got to Superintendent Hemmell. And they tell the story of how Superintendent Hemmell went to the hospital and on his hospital bed provided him with that. And I wanna just thank you because I know as a daughter of a veteran and as someone who cares greatly for our veterans, thank you for doing that, for bringing this forward and so that we can participate with you. Board members, we have a couple of housekeeping items. Today, it is a special board meeting. We also have a workshop, kind of sessions one and two, and somehow in there, we probably need to take a break to either eat or think about eating. So, we had our 11:30, we have a 3 o'clock time certain that we are gonna have upstairs with our foreign exchange students. And so, Maja, I'm asking for your thoughts on when you would like to break because we do have a pretty packed amount of information that we need to go over today. So do you all, you know, one thought is we could just work through and not stop really, or we could order in. The other thing we could do is we could break as a late lunch, really, prior to the 3 o'clock. That would allow Ms. Verdi Rami to move some of her stuff upstairs because she's gotta prep for us. It feels to us like it just magically happens, but I know it doesn't. So, that would be another alternative because either way, then we're gonna have to break for that, for a time for her to do that as well. So any thoughts on that, board members?
Give her an opportunity so that she can get set up.
Do we wanna go then to 2 o'clock and then take a break? And we'll do that? Okay.
Can we, do you wanna, is there anything on here with Hemmell, the workshops issues that could be easily handled upstairs after we meet with our students if we don't have time to finish them?
We kinda put it in a priority order where like the last two items, the last couple items, so if we have to do that, we'll do it.
Okay, and then board members, when we get to, on the workshop, or when we get, I apologize, to our point in the agenda regarding the code of conduct, what we're going to do with that, which is, I've got as School Operations A2, I am going to recess our regular meeting. We will go into our workshop so that then if we need to take any action, we can then come back to our regular board meeting, take that action. We can then finish the meeting at that time if we want and then go back into the workshop. But that would allow us that opportunity. With that, if there is, I think we don't need to modify then the agenda at all, and with that, I would ask for a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'm moving agenda as presented.
I have a motion by Ms. Deutschman, a second by Ms. Powers, to adopt the agenda as recommended by the superintendent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five zero. Citizens' comments, and I have a card by Ms. Victoria Joseph on Renaissance. Ms. Joseph.
Good morning, or afternoon now, all right?
Almost.
All right, Victoria Joseph, Citrus County Education Association President. Superintendent Thomas Kennedy and school board members, I'm standing before you today as the president of Citrus County Education Association, a teacher here in Citrus County, and a concerned citizen in this community. I'm here to ask you to use extreme caution and due diligence as you consider the outsourcing of our Renaissance Center. I realize at this point you are only considering whether or not to begin the inquiry, so my plea to you may be premature. However, I feel compelled to speak on behalf of the faculty, staff, and students as a decision of this magnitude has the potential to disrupt careers and impact the education of our most at-risk students and future citizens. I am fairly certain that you will heavily consider the curriculum offered as well as the mentoring and guidance this or any other institution can offer our students. I'm asking you to take a hard look at the financial savings over an extended period of time. Most often, when private companies submit a bid to take over services, they do so with a very attractive offer. It is, however, also very common that the savings are not long-term and in fact become burdensome over time. I am confident that you will make the right decision for our students and employees. I am simply requesting that before any final determination is made, you will consider all the information thoroughly and without a doubt to be in the best interest of the students, staff, and school district. It would be a shame to save a few dollars at the expense of our most fragile students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Joseph. We are moving on to Business Support Services, Mr. Blocker, and I believe we have Mr. Burkhoff.
That's correct. Superintendent Hemmell, school board members, I request approval of change order number one for Pleasant Grove Elementary School re-roofing.
Board members, do you have any questions or a motion?
I make a motion to approve the change order number one for Pleasant Grove Elementary School re-roofing.
Second by someone?
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Balfour, a second by Ms. Deutschman, to approve change order number one for Pleasant Grove Elementary School re-roofing. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five zero. Mr. Burkhoff.
The next request is to confirm change order number one for La Canto Middle School main electric service improvement.
I'm going to confirm change order number one for La Canto Middle School main electrical service.
Thank you.
I have a motion by Ms. Powers, a second by Ms. Bryant, to approve change order number one for La Canto Middle School electrical service improvement. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five zero. Thank you, Ms. Burkhoff. Mr. Bishop.
Good morning. I would like to ask the boards approval of the instructional support recommendations.
I'm with approval of the instructional support recommendations.
I have a motion by Ms. Deutschman, a second by Ms. Powers, to approve the instructional support recommendations. Any discussions or comments?
Looking at the retirement section, Dale Johns, Renaissance principal, I noticed that his last day, is it, is this correct, May 2nd?
Yep.
That's correct.
Okay, so who's gonna fill in? We've got it.
We'll have some time left. We have Arnie Hopper as assistant principal there. Is that a yes, ma'am? And we'll continue to provide services as needed.
Thank you.
Your lives flash and go your times.
Again, this is always a sad time of the year and happy for those that are actually getting off of this list, but there's some names coming forward, and you know, Mr. Bacon has been there since some of us in this room were in high school. And so, and also, Ms. Whelan, I know she's gonna be around for a little longer, but I also, that's one that I left out that I'll be missing, Ms. Whelan, because she's been a great resource to have for our ESE kids. Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five zero. I'd also like to request the boards approval of new job description for the Renaissance Center aide.
I'm going to approve the new job description for Renaissance Center aide.
I have a motion by Ms. Bryant, a second by Ms. Powers, to approve the new job description for Renaissance Center aide. Questions, comments?
So, you added that aides have to have experience and behavior management, which is a good idea, but also about assisting with monitoring the students while riding the bus. Do they currently, do the aides currently ride the bus, on the Renaissance bus?
Yes, ma'am, that's one of the issues there. The reality was they had been riding the bus, and so we wanted to make sure their job descriptions were more in line with the.
So there's always the expectation that that's part of their job duties?
Yes, ma'am.
Just like the ESE bus, film crest?
Yes, ma'am.
Anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five zero.
The next item, I was gonna ask the board for approval. It will involve a presentation, so I wanna defer to Ms. Whelan to share with the board a presentation on the district administrator's.
Let me ask you that from a complex document, never take my phone. I went through it and read all of it, so I'm waiting to hear the explanation of it.
Yes.
I am here to present the District Administrator Evaluation System. I can share with you that we received a requirement, as a requirement, that we needed to create an evaluation system that met the needs of our district administrators. This would include the administrators that are part of our Ed Services team, this would include the administrators at Student Services and at the Technology Resource Center. This includes administrators that have a direct impact on student achievement, so that's why those administrators were selected to be, they were selected to use this administrator evaluation system.
Tell me again who they are?
This is our Ed Services, our administrators in our Ed Services department, and our Student Services department, and in the Technology Resource Center.
So this is not principals and assistant principals?
No, correct. We will continue to use a school administrator evaluation system for those school administrators.
You'll put that one last.
Okay, I was wondering about that because I couldn't imagine we were so late in doing that.
One of the memorandum of understandings through Race to the Top was a requirement that we link student achievement to our evaluation system for our district administrators, and that, in quotes, is here for you, that language is here for you to read.
Let me ask you something else. As I went through this, I was looking for something to do with advanced degrees and, you know, advanced endorsements or something. I didn't find anything. I could've just missed it, but when you come to that point, if that's a deal, would you point it out to me so I could look at it?
Is that being a job description qualification rather than evaluation?
No, it's one of evaluations. I was thinking of in that terms, like the, this person saying Student Services, then gets a doctorate in that area.
There is nothing that addresses that in this plan with regards to advanced degrees.
Okay. I mean, the obtaining of during.
Correct.
And we do in teachers' evaluation, don't we have that they have done something during the school year that has enhanced their education?
If they, with the teacher evaluation system, if they are seeking an administrative position, we require them to do an additional metric, which is the deliberate practice plan. And that is going to be required of our district administrators as well, and I will share that with you. Our purpose was to design an evaluation system that aligned our five standards that we currently use for our teachers, for our Student Services personnel, which we presented and had approved last year, and for our school administrators. District administrators have a set of core practices, and they are titled the District Office Core Practices, so we align those core practices to meet our needs as well, and I'll share more about that. This evaluation system mirrors the teacher evaluation system, the Student Services evaluation system, and the school administrator evaluation system. We received, as I said, we received from the state a request that we had to create a district administrator evaluation system and submit it by March 31st. Mr. Clutter and I attended a technical training, and then we had a very short timeline to prepare this document to submit to the state. So we went to the technical training, and one thing that they required us to use was the District Office Core Practices. That was pretty much the main requirement that we had with regards to the district administrators, and that we incorporate student achievement data in the evaluation. So we took, as I said, we met all of the administrators, the directors met, and we aligned that, those core practices with our five standards. So we met and did that, that was the initial. Then we also, from that, when we aligned those core practices and the five standards, that's how we created our reflection tool, and if, you'll note that in our Student Services personnel and our teacher evaluation system, they have a reflection tool that they use. When they go through at the beginning of the year and they determine, am I highly effective in this area, do I see myself as effective, needs improvement or unsatisfactory? So they will, this really meets the needs of our district administrators, these indicators under those five standards meets their needs. So that's how we developed our reflection tool. We then looked and decided, do we want to continue with the professional development plan that we have currently used, or do we want to move into that deliberate practice plan for our administrators? And our school administrators are currently doing the deliberate practice plan, so we moved in that direction for our district administrators. So next year, all of the district administrators, again, in Ed Services, Student Services, and TRC, will be required to complete a deliberate practice plan. And Ms. Powers, that is what we require our teachers that are moving into that administrative, that are seeking an administrative position, we require them to complete that. So all of our administrators, our district administrators that fall under that category and our school administrators will be completed, are required to complete that deliberate practice plan. We also looked at the mid-year evaluation tool for administrators, the current one we have, and we really didn't have to modify that at all. We could use the same mid-year evaluation tool, observation tool. We also looked at the summative, and the only piece that we had to change on the summative was instead of the school administrator practices that we use, we substituted the District Office Core Practices. We just put that language in there, and everything else stayed the same. These are the pieces. We have the reflection tool, the narrowing the focus worksheet, and I'll go through each of these, the development and rating rubrics, the deliberate practice plan, the mid-year review instrument, and the summative assessment. And here's our copy, the first page of the reflection tool, there are, I believe, five or six pages, and they're included in your evaluation system packet, and it just shows our standards, and then how those indicators fell under those standards. And this is how the teachers, I mean, I'm sorry, the administrators and our teachers rate themselves at the beginning of the year. And then that leads to discussion, that'll lead to discussion with, if they're coordinator, with their director, if they're a director with Mr. Clutter or Mr. Mullin, to lead to those conversations of what area they wanna focus on for the year.
I have a question.
Yes.
On practice number one, getting results, and it says monitor student success not only on the overall average, including at-risk performance, and I didn't know what that meant.
Okay, 1.9?
I have a lot of questions too about this, so you wanna just go?
Let's go, let's go through these.
Not with this tool, but with the description?
Okay.
We can, that would play to you.
Okay, all right. And as I said, these indicators were indicators that we received from the state that we matched up with underneath our standards. Okay, here's our narrowing the focus worksheet, and this is part of the deliberate practice plan. Here are all 53 indicators and our five that fit under or are aligned with our five standards, and then they go through and determine by how they rated themselves on, under those indicators, and then they slowly narrow down until they have an indicator that they feel they need to work on based on last year's data and based on how they rate themselves on the reflection rubric.
You're supposed to narrow down 53 to one?
To one. One area. Deliberate practice plan is very focused. That is our goal, is to, instead of a professional development plan where they can choose different strategies that semi-relate but not necessarily, you know, not all the time, the deliberate practice plan is very focused, focused on one area that you don't feel that you're highly effective in that area that you really wanna work on, so it does, it narrows it down to one focus, and we.
Some of these are so minor that they have, I would think their impact and choosing them to focus on would be eliminating something that could be very major. They are not weighted, they're not prioritized, they're all, there's 53, you can't have 53 important indicators. If it is where, I don't know, what's had we on, the United Nations or something? It's impossible to have 53 important indicators of your job performance or for anybody to be able to recognize and meet the highest level of 53 individual.
And a lot of them, if you, when you go through, they do, I've noted that they do relate to each other, especially when they, when they go align with those standards, they really do connect with one another, like a lot of time, with standard four with the data that really aligns with standard two, designing the work. So a lot of those kind of fit together.
I think what would help, the clarification that's needed here, is a scenario. If you could give us a hypothetical situation with a hypothetical person and just how the process, how the process would, how they would move through the process.
Okay, I can share with you that with some of our principals, and Mr. Mullin can share this with you as well, because he has actually worked with our school principals on the deliberate practice plans this year, but they narrow their focus down to one area that they wanna work on. Maybe it's higher order questioning in their school. So what they do is they determine that they're going to focus on higher order questioning, they let their staff know that this is gonna be the goal for this year, is to increase higher order questioning in their classroom. They also, when they, when they meet, once a month for staff meetings, they share their data. Okay, when I came through the classroom, I was able to log.
them to focus on would be eliminating something that could be very major. They are not weighted, they're not prioritized, they're all, there's 53, you can't have 53 important indicators. If it is where, I don't know, what's had we on, the United Nations or something? It's impossible to have 53 important indicators of your job performance or for anybody to be able to recognize and meet the highest level of 53 individual.
And a lot of them, if you, when you go through, they do, I've noted that they do relate to each other, especially when they, when they go, um, align with those standards. They really do connect with one another, like a lot of time, with standard four with the data that really aligns with standard two, designing the work. So a lot of those kind of fit together.
I think what would help the clarification that's needed here is a scenario. If you could give us a hypothetical situation with a hypothetical person and just how the process, well, how the process would, how they would move through the process.
Okay, I can share with you that with, with some of our principals, and Mr. Mullen can share this with you as well, because he has actually worked with our school principals on the deliberate practice plans this year. But they narrow their focus down to one area that they want to work on. Maybe it's higher order questioning in their school. So what they do is they, they determine that they're going to focus on higher order questioning. They let their staff know that this is going to be the goal for this year, is to increase higher order questioning in their classroom. They also, when they, when they meet, once a month for staff meetings, they share their data. Okay, when I came through the classroom, I was able to log 53 times, or 53% of the time, higher order questions were being used in the classroom. That has been an increase. Let's say 53% in October, August, maybe like 5%. So we're showing an increase. And then they are monitoring, there's whatever student data they want to use, um, they are monitoring, is it making a difference? Is that student data that they're collecting showing that, that implementing higher order questioning is making a difference in the classroom? So that's why they focus on one area, and they share that information with the staff on a monthly basis. So I see the same.
Mr. Mullen, did you have?
Correct. They share that information with Mr. Mullen when he meets with them throughout the year and at their mid-year review. That is discussed and how they're implementing their plan.
Thank you.
Is there guidance, um, with this, these, these self-assessment standards that, that teachers are going to, I'm sorry, that, that these admin would take on? That their, their administrator or their direct supervisor would say, you know what, these are some standards I think you might want to focus on or look on to, to kind of say, listen, these are, we know your strengths are here, so that we don't need to work on. These are some areas maybe we could enhance or grow. How does, how does that get lifted up?
And that would be the same thing as the discussion that an administrator would have with a teacher. And they do have those discussions. Sometimes we know that, that teachers, um, administrators may, even myself, may see this is, I'm, I feel like I'm highly effective in that area, and maybe others don't see me as highly effective in that area. They see me as developing, needs improvement, effective. And that leads to those conversations when they go through that rubric. And that rubric is for the administrator, for the teacher, for themselves. It's not to be given to their supervisor. That's for themselves. But it lends to those conversations to determine as they work together through the process, maybe there is another area that they, that they come to that conclusion that they need to work on, um, that the administrator or the teacher needs to work on, and the supervisor. That leads to those discussions.
And, and Mr. Mullen, because I, because of course, the object, we hope, is to continue to have growing new leaders in this particular one. So the self-assessment pieces are good, but they don't, they also need to have the expectation from that supervisor. And I know that that's what you've been trying to model with the principals, so that it models down that way. Does that same process take place here? Is that where there's that conversation? And whether they put it as a self-assessment thing they need to, that gets lifted up to say, hey, this is some, this is some things we, I think, we're going to be looking for to come for you to develop? Maybe they're, you know, they've got, they show potential in that area, so we, you want to see more of that.
Yeah, this is kind of like what we used to, or we still do, the professional development plan, that a principal or any administrator says, here's my professional development that I want to work on. This is what we're transitioning this into, is where they're going to recognize, here's why I'm doing that professional development, because I recognize this is where I need to work at. If this is not the only area that we're going to evaluate, we're going to still evaluate principals on all, or administrators on all five standards. But the deliberate practice now becomes the sixth thing that we look at in their overall evaluation. So there'll be other areas, I think is what you're asking, that, that they're working on, but this is the one area that they've identified and that the data also supports what they need to work on.
I think that's important too, because sometimes the very, very best, they, they need to improve more and more and more. So they look at themselves as needs improvement when they're, they are at the very top of the ladder. And what you're saying that, that's talked about, is no, you're really good at that, you know, maybe move on to something else.
And you look at the data that.
Right, the data supports.
Supports what needs to be worked on.
And we have talked about that. You get in your comfort zone, and you're like, okay, I'll use this for my deliberate practice plan because I'm comfortable with it. And when we met with teachers at the beginning of the year, we expressed to them, you need to really work on something that you're not comfortable with. It isn't, deliberate practice plan is not an easy process. It's not meant to be. But it's meant to improve yourself and your professional development, and then student achievement as well.
I mentioned some other things. Einstein always considered himself not particularly bright or gifted, he just considered himself curious. Well, there's some very bright and gifted teachers who do the same, which are curious.
You're absolutely correct. People that, that identify most weaknesses are usually doing the least amount of work.
Right.
Those that need the most amount of work are the ones that can't find weaknesses.
I, I guess what my concern is with, we've, we've moved away from strategic planning. We've moved away from identifying problems and for causal analysis and root cause. That was all, came and went, I think, with our school improvement process, that was very much focused on student data. And, and what is causing that student data to be what it is, and what do we need to do, do we identify the strategies that will be most effective in improving it, and then measuring whether they were done, and then how effective they were, to simply saying, I don't provide the team recognition, so that must be the cause. So I, I'm sure there's more to it than this. But there seem to be so many things in here. 53 indicators is almost crazy. It's way, I mean, why don't we have five for each one? I mean, why don't we pick out the ones that really have, are impactful? If I don't recognize my team, does that really, does that really have an impact on student achievement? How do I know that? I mean, that's not for me to explain. That might be my personal weakness. Maybe I'm not good at that because of my personality. You know, maybe I sit in my office and I spend all my time staring at my computer screen rather than patting people on the back. Is that as important as, um, as doing a deep analysis of problems and identifying whether or not that it is even significant to anybody's job performance? I mean, I just saw so many of these as to be very non-consequential and of little value, and I didn't see enough on using and analyzing data to actually get to the core of what it is that we need to know, not what the person needs to know to improve themselves as a person, but how do they become an effective leader? And that leadership represents what? What are we trying to increase? What are we trying to improve? What is their responsibility for their team? And what is their expectations of their team? Um, I, I didn't see a lot of that.
And I still think the expectation is to increase student achievement that with that deliberate practice plan, because on number four, on narrowing the focus, it says school data support. So what does that, and it has, what does that school data show that our area, and I agree with you, that what does that, what does that show that we, that we need? Maybe not school recognition data doesn't support that, but what does? That still is the key there. What does that data show that we need to work on, that our area of focus needs to work on for that deliberate practice plan?
All right, not, not to be picking on words, but there's a couple of things here that I'm, I'm saying, are we being too soft, soft sided with this? If you look at 4.5 on the using data, that's problem solving. Use formative interim and summative assessment data as part of the district's culture to review and adapt plans. The culture? Culture? It's not a cultural issue. This is absolute requirement. It is part of our strategies and our policy to review those student performance data, not our culture. I mean, culture is just becomes what we are, the habit of doing. That's our culture. But that shouldn't, that should be beyond, we're way beyond culture now. We should be that, we're using this as our focus and our driver of strategies of identifying where we need to go, not because it's in our culture, because it's absolutely our total responsibility. I think there's a big difference between taking responsibility and having it be an inbred culture that we all accept. I, I think that's my concern with a lot of this. We need to make this extraordinarily significant and powerful, and so there needs to be less of it, because if you have 53 indicators.
And these were the, the indicators that were given to us by the state.
Well, who says the state has any sense? I mean, I have a question about that.
Here, here.
And we did, and when we met, when the, um, directors met, we did, you know, combine some that were, that were like, or we did make some modifications to some wording. So we worked on this as a committee to come up with the indicators and how they align to the standards.
But it says you're going to monitor them, but it doesn't say what you're going to do about them. It doesn't place a responsibility for those improvements. They don't find anywhere in here that the responsibility is being transferred to that administrator for positive and increasing results. If there's a lot of monitoring, consistent data, we're doing this, we're doing that, we're, we're identifying, we're highlighting, we're communicating, but I don't see here that we are directly held responsible for those improvements that have been identified. That is the responsibility of that district administrator for what, for whatever their job title requires of them. It's hard to assess, in my opinion, if I was their supervisor, it would be very difficult for me to assess their effectiveness if I'm looking at things like monitoring and identifying and communicating. Do I share? Do I compliment? Do I tell people stuff? Do I, do I make sure that everybody, um, there's a lot of monitoring in here. It's collaborating, it's sharing. I don't see producing results is what I guess I, I'm feeling is lacking here. We have our district administrators at this high level. I would think that you would also have a high level of expectations that were very clear, very concise, and probably pretty narrow. Can't do 53 different things well. We know that. None of us can. Probably can't do 25 things out of a list of areas.
We definitely respect your opinion, and I definitely see the, the situation that you're in as far as compliance. Looking at this tool, what's up here on projector, I, I see, from my perspective, the goal is for there to be almost an education piece here. Make sure that your staff knows what the standards are. So first, they're doing a reflective analysis of, and getting a detail of what those standards are. It goes back to job clarification with an understanding that this is a common thread of concern and obligation throughout the district. So as a supervisor, you need to be aware of what the state requires from you. So that first piece then leads her to the second level of awareness where they're self-scoring. And I, I get how the tool is to help guide their awareness and their deeper understanding of their obligation. I under, I get that part of the tool. Listening to her frustration, I, I see that too, because we're kind of caught between a rock and a hard place here. We've got to comply with the legislative action. And yet, from a common sense perspective, there is so much on the plate already for each of us, and to have to sit there and do that, I think it all comes down to how this will roll out in day-to-day action and how this will be implemented. So it goes back to, how will you judge those people, Mr. Mullins, those supervisor over the, the different layers of staff? Will, what tool, what source will that measurement of success with the monitoring and the data analysis? At what point will we say this is documentation improved of successful strategies that have increased student performance? So she's looking for that correlation, she's looking for it to be thinned down, and I see that you're stuck. You've got to have a tool that demonstrates what state statute requires, and I see that this does. The more it's utilized, the more effective the process will be.
And I think with the deliberate practice plan, you are narrowing in on that one area that you're going to focus on, but it also correlates with student achievement. You are looking to see what you are implementing is directly correlated, is, are students improving in? And they have to find, district administrators will be required to find, what tool are they going to use to monitor whether or not students are making progress through their deliberate practice plan?
If you have 53 indicators, how do you say, we're just going to pick one this year to focus on? If 53 are important, why are we expecting only one to be an area of focus that? It seems like there's too many, if there's 53 indicators, there's 53 very important practices. So you should be doing probably more than 53.
And you do, when you, when you complete the deliberate practice plan, you're focusing on one, but as Mr. Mullen said, you are also focusing on others, maybe that you need improvement, or needs improvement developing, or even effective, that you want to move to highly effective. You are still focusing on some of those, on some of those areas and indicators throughout the year.
And what is the evaluation would be? The one or all?
It's all, there's six areas that don't be evaluated, the five standards and the deliberate.
Correct.
So I mean, you're, you're not ignoring other areas of weakness that you need to improve on, but you have to have a professional development plan, and we're asking that your professional development plan be based on what you need to work on, and that you tie that with student data. That's what we're asking. And that you don't just go out and say, well, I'm going to work on professional development on how to do X, Y, Z, when we already think you're strong in X, Y, Z, but you're weak in these other areas. That's what.
And I can share with you, and I don't know the exact number, but I believe the indicators for the teacher evaluation system are at about 50. So we're kind of in the same boat with regards to the teacher. Student services, the same approximately, I think maybe 37, 40. So we, we do have those. The state has required us to use those indicators and then.
There are a lot of things that they'll show as evidence at the end of the year in their evaluation that are connected to multiple ones, multiple indicators. So it's not just like they're all.
This is a work in progress.
Yes, it is a work in progress.
As you remove this, you're going to identify the areas that need to be tweaked, and then...
Yes. And we meet, we meet at least on a yearly basis with the teacher evaluation system. We, typically, we meet twice a year. We will do the same thing. We meet on a regular basis with this, with regards to the school administrator evaluation system. We'll probably meet again with student services. So it's a continuous work in progress. We meet all the time to refine it.
And I appreciate that. One of the things, though, when we've had the, the teacher evaluation system, and then we had the school-based evaluation system, and now the district evaluation, that I still come back to that same question of, how does the evaluation system separate someone who we want to keep and we want to develop versus ones that we don't? And will that evaluation system at the end of the day show us that or guide us in that direction? I, I was not convinced as much with the administrative evaluation system, the school-based one, that it, that it really can separate those two. This, while more complex, or feels a little more complex than even that, where I think that the, the evaluation system with the school-based is becoming more effective is what I hear is the conversation between Mr. Mullen and the principals. More than I see the system doing that, I see a, a more consistent conversation that has, has been facilitated. But that's really not the, the evaluation system. It's really been the superintendent staff, executive team doing that. The same is here. These are, these are really neat, and these are some great self-guiding tools, but are they really telling us who is our leaders and who is not? Or is it really just, again, compliance?
And I think the evaluation system, what I found from being an assistant principal, is that, and, is that it leads a lot more to those conversations. The reflection tool has been put in place to lead to those conversations of, are you highly effective in those areas? Do you see yourself as effective? The mid-year review piece lends itself to that conversation. You're meeting with each teacher, you're having those conversations, you're sharing your concerns. If they're still at the needs improvement or developing, it's lending itself more to those conversations. I see a lot of conversations going on, even more than when I was a teacher in the classroom and my beginning stages of, or my first few years as assistant principal, I see a lot more conversations. The deliberate practice plan, this was new for our school administrators this year, as well as our teachers are seeking an administrative position. They're having conversations all the time with regards to their deliberate practice plan. I think the summatives, they're, they're taking, I know our administrators in just having conversations that Mr. Bishop and I have had with our administrators, and the conversations we've had with Mr. Mullen, they are taking that time to have those conversations, discuss the standards. Our teachers, and I know our administrators, come in with how they've met those five standards. What indicators do they feel at the end of the year that they are highly effective or effective or still developing needs improvement? And it's just continuing to lend to those conversations, which through those several meetings throughout the years, those walkthroughs that we do, those informal walkthroughs, formal walkthroughs that are documenting, they're looking for specific things. The observation that is now required, the one observation for our teachers that have four or more years, lending itself to those conversations. I know even through my walkthroughs when I was an assistant principal, I put reflective questions on every walkthrough, just to get them thinking about their instructional practice and what areas that they were focusing on. It continually kept in my mind what area that they were focusing, focusing on with their professional development, or what areas that they saw as strengths or areas to develop. And so I just continually worked with them. So I see it more, as you said, as there's, there's a lot more conversation.
And, and those conversations are, have been tremendously, I think, effective, but then there comes that point of, you know, you, and I think of the teacher, because we certainly do more evaluations of teachers than, than typically any other staff, that you walk out and go, okay, they told me this, but how am I doing? You know, does this reflect so that I can walk away going, okay, now I know what I need to do for next year. Now I need to know what to approve. That's to me, that, that piece, though, that those conversations are critical. And again, I think we've come so far. But is there a guiding tool at the end that says, okay? But is there a guiding tool at the end that says, okay, I got my roadmap for next year. This evaluation tells me where I'm going for next year, what I need to work on, what I did well for this year. We expect that from students. You know, that's what we're trying to focus on. I think that's the idea we have for teachers. I think we're in practice trying to do that with our administrators. But are we providing the right tool so that you all have that at the end of the day? That those leaders can go and go, here's my roadmap for next year. And that's what I would hope that we would be providing for you.
I think the deliberate practice plan itself will do that.
Will do that. Okay.
Because again, my assessment is going to be based on hardcore facts, student data. It's going to be reflective there. So the intent would be that they would recognize the same needs for improvement that you would recognize, especially as an administrator.
Well, and the tool is impacted by the tool user. So if you have a strong administrative team, they're going to be able to identify and guide conversation in order to build a plan of success for staff. The goal is to identify the areas and have open dialogue and honest dialogue about the improvements that need to take place. And it looks like you've developed, whether you guys developed it or it was handed to you, it doesn't matter. But looking at your probably two slides away, that deliberate practice plan gives you the tool to move forward with clear expectations of performance for staff.
And I can tell you another activity that we did that I felt was very beneficial is that when we met with assistant principals and when we met with principals, we gave examples of highly effective, effective, developing, needs improvement, and not unsatisfactory, just those three areas, summatives. And we read through the summatives and we talked about, they did not know what the rating was, but we talked about, was there just clear factual information? Was there opinions? So we had that discussion and they felt, we received, Johnny and I received feedback from administrators and they felt that it was very effective. That we are trying to be as consistent as possible with our evaluation system with clear expectations and making sure we provide our teachers and our administrators clear feedback on their successes and still areas to develop at the end of the school. So they do have a, they use that data and that information that we provide them in the summative. So they do have hopefully a clear roadmap of where they're going for the following year.
And this one you read, as you say, it's part several steps. When you read this, it's so general, generality, spreading. You would say, what are we talking about? Give an example. Now you just said you do give examples and that's good because you have them. You would not know what you're supposed to be doing.
Correct. That's why we talked about, we do have the definitions for the four ratings. But I felt like it was very beneficial, you know, to our staff or to our administrators to have that discussion. And it was a discussion. I mean, it was everyone sharing together so that we are as consistent as possible with our evaluations to our staff. Okay, this is the rating rubric. There are two rating rubrics. There's development rating rubric, how they develop their deliberate practice plan. And then there's the rating rubric, how they implement it. Doesn't necessarily mean when they set that goal of where they want the percentage to be, as I said, for higher order questioning or for how their students did the student achievement data. It's just how they implemented their plan is what they receive a rating on it. And our administrators and Mr. Mullins use this rubric to guide them into giving the administrator or the teacher overall rating. Here is a copy of the deliberate practice plan. It is the same except for it says district leader's name and position. It is the exact same as we use for our teachers and our school administrators.
That's one part about what I do this year is that you're using the same instrument with each one.
And we try to keep it as consistent as possible across the board. We have those discussions. If we change the definition for highly effective, which we did make a change, it changed across the board.
I guess my lingering concern with this is you have an evaluation tool for principals. Principals all have pretty much the same job description. You have an evaluation tool for teachers. They pretty much have the same job description. Now we're talking about comparing ed services, student services, and technology services using the mechanical evaluation piece that has generic statements like shared productive monitoring methods with school leaders to support school and/or district-wide improvement. Improvement of what? Who are the leaders? What are you talking about? And if you're talking about overall averages and monitoring data, the technology department is going to be monitoring completely different data than student services.
That's correct.
So I don't even know why you would use the same evaluation tool. Why wouldn't you have a specific evaluation tool that really focuses on what those specific responsibilities are? Because when you get to the administrative level, they become more narrowly focused because you're looking at one area not as broad.
I will tell you, I wrestled with the same situation.
Thank you.
Deutschman, again, you know, I follow that rule. If that basically is expectation of the state, I have my guidelines. I follow those, you know.
Can we just tell the state we think your ideas are a little silly?
I haven't had that happen.
If that's a motion, I bet we could come up with a second.
And I just addressed, that was my concern, Mr. Deutschman. I wanted to know, these 53 indicators, how they're going to apply to Dr. Geddes, to Regina Allegrini, and all of those. So what we basically did, and I think that Suzie actually did a wonderful job of facilitating this. We actually spent two days going through every one of those single 53 indicators. And we basically talked about, okay, what does it mean? How would this be looked at in your department or in your area? And how would you see that? I was there. I'm going to be their supervisor for these. I could hear that conversation would ask those questions. So I basically would say, okay, in this core practice, let's say, you know, assisting the schools like Dr. Geddes. And some of those are very, one thing I was going to bring up is that some of them may be significant at the time of which we actually were like the standards. If we're doing teaching and learning, how that has actually changed, how does this evaluation system then affect Dr. Geddes? And his role would be that he's doing what he does in order to be able to support the instruction that's going on in that class. So that's what we did. And that was, I think, the need of what this process was for us so that we could read that, really run it through that wordsmithing to find out, okay, what does this mean for student services? And so I would always ask, okay, how do you see this? Tell me how this would be played out in your area. And we had some very good conversations that took two days for us to go through that. So yes, Mr. Deutschman, I did say, you know, maybe we should just have one system for each one. But by going through those indicators, you're right. They don't apply to every single department that's out there. But the ones that do, that we talked about, I would have that conversation. Again, that collaboration is key. Just like Mr. Balfour said, it is a process that we start with that self-reflection and we kind of just continually talk, talk, talk until we find an area that it might be for professional development. And Lyndy Werthaila was in our process as well. And then Nancy Haynes. So we had all the directors from our departments that went through this. So I completely, I'd said that, but then again, this was one model that we could actually keep consistent.
So does the state supply this with the 53 indicators?
Correct.
In these words?
District, we were able to modify. There's a few that we combined that virtually said the same exact thing. And we decided that as a team, as a committee, and there was a few, for lack of a better word, were very confusing. And so we were able to modify those. But as Mr. Potter said, we really did look at those. All right, we did have those conversations. All right, Regina, how does this fit you and Kit Hambaugh? Dr. G, how does this fit you and your needs for professional development? So we did work through that and talk through that.
Well, this point's written down, so the next person's sitting.
Yeah, really. This is kind of like reading between the lines. You gotta remember what's in your head.
We did not. I think Lisa Stewart, our secretary, has some notes. And we have some notes as well.
Well, if you're asking for us to approve this, I actually am not going to vote for it because it grammatically is a bit of a mess. It's too, it maintains a consistent record of student achievement. What the heck does that mean? We're problem solving rather than planning and organizing. I mean, I'm just so uncomfortable with a lot of the words in here. They're so nonspecific, generic, and they don't mean anything. And 53 indicators is probably about 40 indicators too many to be meaningful. So I don't like this tool. I'm sorry. I know it's what you all have to do, but I...
And there is a point I don't like, 1.14, it says monitor's achievement gaps. I'm sure they have been eliminated, but it says, or is it...
Who's achievement gaps? By what metric?
Yeah.
How are we measuring that?
Well, I think that those questions that they're bringing up, from my experience as a teacher and as an administrator, working with the tools that we've developed over the years, those, the design of the document is to be, I don't want to say interpreted loosely, but the way it's designed is that it offers the administrator and the person from whatever part of the power pyramid that's being evaluated an opportunity to see their job description through the lens of, how do I impact student achievement? So with that as the core question, no matter what your role is, how do I impact student achievement in what category when it comes to the state's tool?
Well, I've always been a believer in saying what you mean and meaning what you're saying. And this is, there's nothing in here that means anything really specific.
Very, very general. You can hire or hire anyone by using this. It's so general. It's like something you expect us in the law to be real.
Anything.
Maybe sometimes. Okay. Yeah. It's yes, no. Do you like that yes, no? Maybe sometimes.
Ms. Wade, if we weren't being required to do this by the state, would we be doing it?
How does this compare to our...
And by the way, it's not a bad, I mean, because a lot of this is compliance.
Yes.
And I guess that's what we're grappling with.
It's the third step of our evaluation system of race to the top. We start with teachers, principals. I think that to answer your question, I think we would still be going through a review.
A review, but it might not look exactly like this. And I think that's probably what we're all saying up here. Is as much as anything, as we're saying, you know, and I'm not really speaking to you all as much as I am to the general public, is that we're being told all the time that we're being given local control. That, you know what, you didn't have to use all of these standards like this. You could have done something else that we would have rejected. And so, you know, absolutely, you can have any color you want as long as it's black. And the reality is, is if we would be coming up with our own evaluational system for Citrus County, it probably wouldn't look up like this. It would look more like what we have now. And that we would then revise it to meet the current needs at the moment. Not 53? Was it 53 different?
We actually eliminated some of it, Mr. Dean.
And everyone you eliminated, I'm sure it was more than appreciative.
And I hear your concern is, the biggest concern that you have is with the district office core practices. And that's the piece that the state gave us to use.
You all are fantastic and possible situations.
Again.
Again, right. But given all these things you have to comply with, and yet, there's nothing in there that's so specific that you can put your finger on and say, yes, that worked. No, that didn't. It's so general and it's so philosophical. And let me give one more example. 4.7 involves schools and communities to collect data on curricula and extracurricular student involvement to assure equal opportunity for student participation.
Right. Just collecting data. You're not doing anything about it.
But that's the action that the instrument is trying to ensure takes place. That's where the accountability piece happens. Because if that administrator from ed services or tech resources or whatever their role is, if they're not doing that component, that becomes a supervisor's role to help spotlight that. How does that translate in your job description? It all goes back to, a student is supposed to be responsible. What's responsible behavior look like in a classroom compared to a cafeteria or a gym, gymnasium? So that comes again to the responsibility of the person that is the supervisor to provide clear expectations of behavior. So we are, with this document, truly putting a lot of responsibility there in the hands of our top-level supervisory team here in Citrus County. So it really comes down to the accountability factor of performance of staff lies in their hands. Because they're the ones that are guiding the use of the tool.
It's being in hands. You didn't see this, but I got advantage over your quality of notes. He has notes. I don't know what will happen.
I need to question that.
This is a self-evaluation tool.
But we have notes.
Obviously, it's a self-evaluation tool to be used in conjunction with someone else who uses it as an evaluation tool. Who else, who is evaluating these three district-level administrators? Is that you, Mr. Mullins? Is that you, Ms. Mullins?
Mr. Mullins.
Mr. Mullins, do you need 53 indicators to know whether or not someone's doing a good and effective job?
I think it helps if you're giving them a baseline. You need more indicators. It's similar to what I use with principals and similar to what the principals use with the teachers. Although you may not expect every indicator to be evidence of every indicator, it does help guide you to get the conversation. You can point out that you think you're working on the school, or connections that you're with principals. I don't find it cumbersome with the principals. Have I used it yet with the district staff?
Do you find any clarity or permissions of important indicators that you wish were in there?
No, I think it mirrors what we're doing with principals very closely. It allows us, there's a lot of flexibility within there. You mentioned not everything is going to fit Dr. Geddes' area. And it may be not correctly, but indirectly, there's a lot of connections that I can...
Board members, in an effort to continue to move along, my thing that I'm just going to say is, while I'm going to support it today, I have some real concerns that it may not look like this if we were having our total control over it. And that I really want to make sure that we provide district, whether it's this or another evaluational system, something that at the end of the day is clear to the recipients. But I do have some hindsight to be able to say that I've seen what you've done with the administrative. I think it's continued to be a work in progress, but I think those conversations have been productive. And so I have no problem accepting where we're at. And I will support it, but I will tell you, I have a feeling that it would be very easy for us not to accept this today because there is enough of us that I think have issues with it. So...
One last question though.
Go right ahead.
Because the entire part of the matrix talk out of our discussion today, which is student performance data. There's nothing in here that indicates which student performance data will be used in part of 50% of the administrative evaluations.
It will be the district rating. Whatever the district receives as the rating will be the rating that we use for their evaluation. So when we...
The district rating of what?
Whatever the district rating is, whether it be highly effective, yes. Effective because the district administrators have an impact on all students in our district. They will receive the district overall rating.
Does that apply though for students that they then don't have? Like the new law, I thought, said that if you're a teacher and you cannot be given an evaluation on students you don't have. If someone only deals with secondary and no elementary, would that apply?
I'm deferring to Mr. Potter, but I believe that we discussed that everybody has...
Everybody in our department basically oversees K-12 programs.
That was a discussion we had.
Oh, you just got them working so hard. No, truthfully, I mean, even math field day and all those other things that I know you touch, whether they're there in... So that is looked at then holistically and not in those generals.
Interesting. I think the more students listen to us, it's important. We react technically with, oh, excellent job. And if someone comes down to you and says, hey, you, it's like, okay, let go.
I was just going to say, here's the hay and we expect to have 14 hearing.
Just to kind of remind you, guidance councils for within the process, those go for us actually on a school-wide basis.
And then the last piece is the summative. And as I said, the only thing that we've changed from the summative, from the school administrator, is that we've added the district office core practices. Those indicators along, how they've met those indicators along with the five standards will be documented under Section A. Section B will be documented how, well, they implemented their deliberate practice plan. And then C is their rating, the district rating that they will receive for the data portion. And then the overall rating. Any other questions? Any other questions?
Board members, any more discussion?
How much time has this taken you to do this?
A little while, it takes some time.
How many permutations, since I've been here 16 years, how many permutations, we're working on the world, Marzano, how many pillars of learning, how many evaluation tools, how many different things have we jumped through, STAR, Math.
Oh, I forgot about STAR, too, yeah.
Yeah, we can go way, I, I, I'm afraid that this is just, just a sudden pile of more stuff from the state that makes us spend and waste a lot of time creating a lot of paper, 53 indicators, and then next month, it'll be somebody else's smart idea. So I, I'm sorry for you, that you have to go through all of this, but I, at some point, have to just say, enough is enough with this, and it's, it's just, it's just not a tool that I think focuses in on what the priorities should be, so I, I can't, I can't, I'm, I'm no longer going to play the game of the state.
I'm sure.
And I have to say that I can remember first time something like this came up, I even had neurotic pages that was assigned to me to send to the state of Florida, and some programs were very similar to this, the behavioral checks, I do all those, and I summarize everything that happened in the school, all of the matter in about two weeks. It was incredible. And where is that now? Is it topical, is it just no, everyone's forgotten about it? So just as I said, we're all working so hard to do things that we change in three weeks.
Killing a lot of trees.
Appreciate you so much, and I feel appreciate that, thank you.
Ms. Balfour, did you have anything before we vote?
Whatever the tool is, is, it doesn't, it's only effective, the effectiveness all comes down to the supervisor. So no matter what the tool is, it's the expectation and the clear message sent from the supervisor that will determine the outcome. So I, I can't stress enough, set the expectations clear with this now and move forward, and I know it's a work in progress, so I know that we.
I will be back there next year to give you updates on where we are with all of the evaluation systems.
I know that whatever needs to be tweaked, so thank you very much.
Ms. Bryant.
I just need to say thank you, because you've helped me a lot, I appreciate it.
And I thank you, and along those lines of what Ms. Balfour said, it's why I have confidence, Mr. Mullin, and Mr. Blocker, only because you, I think this is primarily towards our educational staff, but I, I have a lot of faith in, in you and your team underneath it, so I can support it for that. So with that, I'm going to call all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries four, zero, four. Oh, we didn't have a motion, I'm sorry. Thank you very much. Can we have a motion on this, then?
I think a motion that we approve the Citrus County District's administrative evaluation system as presented.
I have a motion by Ms. Balfour, a second by Ms. Bryant, that we approve, I have to look here for a second, where we were, okay, so that we approve the presentation, we approve the new Citrus County District's administrative evaluational system, and now I'll recall for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four, one, with Ms. Deutschman descending.
Thank you.
Ms. Charnich, I believe.
Ms. Charnich, I could follow this. I know, I have time to follow. That's a shame.
I am pulling my report up that you sent us, thank you for sending it in advance, and thank all the staff for doing that, because it does help us get prepared for these meetings, so thank you.
I'm here to ask you to approve the proposed revised and ratified contract between the Citrus County School Board and the Citrus County Educational Association, is the instructional contract?
Oh, she sent us an insurance, that's her lady. I'm sorry.
Wait, I sent both, I sent this one maybe two days ago, and the other one just a day ago. So we're here right now about the contract, asking you to approve the changes that have been made to the instructional contract, it has been ratified by our union.
I move to approve the proposed revised and ratified contract between Citrus County School Board and the Citrus County Education Association.
I'll say. I have a motion by Ms. Bryant, a second by Ms. Balfour, to approve the proposed revision and ratification contract between the Citrus County School Board and the Citrus County Educational Association. Any discussion or comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes five, zero.
That was easy.
Yes, thank you.
Really good.
And I think we have juvenile.
Good morning or afternoon. I'm here seeking approval of the juvenile justice education program enrollment and career technical courses grant for the Department of Juvenile Justice. This is for Cypress Creek, it is in the amount of $33,600, which is $350 per 96 students at Cypress Creek. This is to aid them in their career and technical program, which is digital design at Cypress Creek. It is in a grant that we were given the opportunity to apply for in February and has to be spent by June 30th, so we're on a very tight timeline, but what our plan is, is to, with a digital design program, to expand some of the operations with that. They are working on, in the digital design lab, on desktop publishing, and so this would allow them to have Photoshop, some of the cameras, those type things, to be able to further enhance the things that they're doing.
And was, was the restrictions on the grant tailored to fit that specific need as far as Photoshop?
It was whichever career and technical program that the, that the facility already had, and it had to be spent specifically on the digital design program, and it was specifically for $350 per student, and Cypress Creek has 96 students, so that's where they came up with the $33,600.
Yeah, I'm just looking at spending the money towards something that there's a real need out there as far as job placement, job opportunity, but you're seeing that there's, by giving these students this specific opportunity, the skills will be marketable.
Yes, because what they're able then to do is pass the industry certification test, to then have that as a marketable skill once those students get out. And right now, they have the opportunity to pass the Microsoft Suite program of work, and now, kind of going along with that is being able to use Photoshop and some of the other design things.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Knowles, is there any security issues that have changed on Cypress Creek site that also make this a more viable option? Because I know in the past, they used to have saws and machinery, and they could build all kinds of different things, and, and has there been some security changes that have affected having this?
They have taken that particular program out, which was outside the wood shop, et cetera, and they have now replaced that with two new portables, or a double Y type situation, the design lab is now outside. That still re, leaves the reading and math lab inside for the students to work with, so it's now still a privilege to go, to be able to go to the design lab, and the students really want to go there, so behavior has, positive behavior has changed, so that they can go to the design lab, because they love going there. And they have several things that they're working on, it's not just, here I'm coming in to study, to be able to pass the Microsoft test, but there are several things that they're working on at the time, so when they have the, the lab opportunity. The other, the positive piece of it is, they are now wiring the entire facility to be able to have wireless access for the computers, which will, with the Perkins Grant that you all approved earlier, will allow them in the, their dormitory space, common area space, to be able, in the classrooms, to use computers there as well.
Thank you.
I move to approve the digital justice education program's enrollment and career and technical education courses grant, Department of Juvenile Justice, Cypress Creek.
I have a motion by Ms. Powers, a second by Ms. Deutschman, to approve the juvenile justice educational programs enrollment and career and technical education course grant for the Department of Juvenile Justice at Cypress Creek. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five, zero. At this time, then, if there's no objection, what I'm going to do is recess the current meeting. Does anybody need a break right now? No, okay. I'm going to recess, then, the current meeting, and let us go into the workshop. So I'm going to go ahead and recess this meeting, and we will open the workshop, and...
Mr. Pitti, what about the modification? That's what you say, we'll come back.
That's, we're going to come back to that, ma'am, so that in case we need to make any, if we do need to make any changes, then we can do that.
All right.
So do you want to go ahead and start the budget, then?
What about our attendance?
No, that's what I was going to say, I didn't know if you wanted to go A, B, C, or if you wanted to just start with C.
But the attendance policy, oh, I see, that's number C, I see.
Yeah. Do we, um, it's your, no, it's your priority for board, if there, if you, if staff's ready, we can go right into attendance.
She just walked out.
She just walked out, okay. Then we're going to start with budget, you know? I was just looking for it to get better and better.
It's good.
It is good, that's good.
Well, I mentioned the money.
All right, well, good afternoon. We came here today, or come here today to give you an update on the, on the general fund budgeting, and we got a little bit of capital at the end, didn't give a lot of information about capital, just have an overview as to how our facilities in construction, but as you know, the legislature is winding down in the last couple of weeks of the session, they're coming together in like two separate conferences to hopefully put together one document that I believe has to be done by next Tuesday, so they have the 72-hour cooling off period to take the final vote by the end of week. So by the next, in the next week, we should have some sort of final budget as looking like from the legislature. So what we are using in here is we plugged in the House run that we currently have to use as our, kind of our revenue numbers from the end of the year, okay?
Is that the high budget, or the low budget, or the medium budget?
That's the high budget right now.
The high budget.
We assume.
Governor's less than?
The governor's, actually, the Senate is actually a little less than the governor's, and then the House was higher, which we assume that's going to be the end result, they are kind of in control of the budget process this year.
Senate got it this year. The Senate got it this year.
I thought the House was in control, but, be that as it may, they'll come together and give us a vote. So just kind of, if we back up to the last budget workshop we had, there were some requests from the board for us to bring back to you to discuss, and one was the number of administrators compared to the number of instructional and student ratio at our schools. Explore webinar instruction, I think some of that, y'all had some dialogue with Dr. Gess about some of that webinar instruction already. Compare the savings of one mile to two mile secondary ridership, and also to discuss the superintendent chairing was to generate a list of idols to present to the education foundation for possible funding, and those were the, the four areas that y'all asked me to come back and report on at this meeting for you. So if we look at the ratios, that'll be where we start off first, for administrator to instruction, a ratio, and this is based on current staffing for this year, for the 2014 year, and in this slide, you see the high schools and the middle school and what their ratios are. So in this case, for the high school, the Citrus High, you got one administrator for 23.75 students, LaCanto, one for 26.5, and Christopher, one for 22. Instructional. Correct, I'm sorry. So this is what you asked me to bring back to you, so.
Wait, start, start to my.
So what administrator?
Yes, I'm sorry, he corrected me.
And the staff, is that, is it specifically instructional?
Instructional staff, all instructional staff, that may include your guidance counselors, your toses and deans, et cetera, all of those, that's fallen under, under umbrella.
Okay. What, what would administrator be here?
Press school or AP.
That's it.
Yep. So you can see the ratios for high school and the ratios for middle school. Questions about this? It kind of, it is what it is, it's just.
The dean.
Where at? The dean is an instructional unit, he's not an administrator.
And our, and our, well, our instructional units may not be necessarily based on student population, it could be student population with special needs, that sort of thing.
ESC, yes.
So the instructional staff includes deans, toses.
Guidance counselors, all that, right.
And so, so you know, toses, we don't really have deans, we have toses now that are assigned to student services, but their name is changed.
Right, but we also have, especially at the elementary school level, but, which we'll get to, but some schools have specific programs for students that have high needs and have a very high student teacher ratio that other schools don't have.
That's correct. Yep. So here's the elementary, you can see the ratios there. Honestly, they're all pretty consistent, except two small schools, if you look at them, but it's just a, it's a good guide to see what the ratios are to administrator to instruction. Okay. And here's the other request, administrator to student ratio, and once again, this was based on our, this year's staffing and the, and the 14 forecast on how we staffed the schools this year. So you can see at the high school, one administrator per, you know, could be over from 407 to 334.5 students, and in the middle school, you see the, the numbers and what they represent.
But this, too, can vary on, on perhaps what those student needs are, too. I mean, if you've got significant, you know, developmental at one school, it really wouldn't get factored in the fact that maybe there is, that there is a greater need at one school than another.
This is, yeah, this is only administrator to student.
To just the, the blank student ratio. And I am asked consistently, you know, if we ever were questioning about their administrative staff, they look like they're still doing a lot of work there.
Plus the biggest movement.
Yes.
No, no, for sure, that's what I'm saying, that they, they definitely are doing, they're justifying, I guess it sounds like, that additional admin person there.
And then this is the administrator to student ratio at the elementary school.
Homosassa is again the lowest.
But they're above half, which is a little interesting.
Right.
Not a little, it's a lot interesting.
And you can see Rockcrusher's coming down as well, I mean, their student population is, is declining.
How many that are, and I don't know if you know this off the top of your head, but how many are going there that are zoned for there, not, that are out of zone?
At Rockcrusher?
No, at Homosassa.
Homosassa, I believe 200, and, there's like 60 out of zone, so it's probably 270, 260 that are actually zoned there.
So, so we've got 260 that are zoned, and this is Homosassa only?
That are out of zone.
260?
No, about 60 that are out of zone.
Oh, 60 are out of zone, out of the 260.
No, no, 270 are zoned for there.
270 are zoned for there.
And an additional 60.
So about 330 roughly are going there.
330 are probably there, 60 of which are out of zone.
Correct. Is that, that seems, I'm sorry, Mr. Jackson, that just, that seems high, is that percentage wise, I mean, maybe high, but not abnormally high?
Not really, because we have about 10% out of zone students across the district.
Okay, so that's, that's what I was wondering, so.
Mr. Blocker?
Although that's about 20%, that's over 20% there, then.
Some are higher, some are lower.
I'm sorry.
That's good. Ms. Blocker, you have given us the information in the past, and it might have been helpful to have it here at this time, although I think we asked for, would be the cost per student at each school?
Yeah, we have that in our budget book, but I... Yeah, we have that in our budget book, but I can email you this, or I, yeah, that way you can see what it is.
Is that based on last year, or is this year?
In the budget book, it's certainly on the projections for student enrollment based on what we've staffed them at. I've actually done some updates to that form.
Would you send us the updates then?
That way you can have the information.
And you don't have Crest, I don't think, or Renaissance?
No, I was just focusing more on the mainstream schools, Crest and Renaissance. Yeah. We can update that for you for next meeting.
Crest is kind of its own thing, because it's funded based on different formula.
It's got a weighted, it hasn't much rate.
A lot of two fifty fours, two fifty fives, and certainly you see the services and everything, so... The next thing y'all asked me to bring back to you was the difference between the one mile and the two mile ridership at secondary. So, this is kind of the data and how it currently pans out as to what schools, you know, what transportation is transporting students within those mile ratios to the schools at secondary.
Those are, those are established bus riders, not students that live within a mile.
Correct. So, if you look...
The only question I wondered on that too is, is there a proportional difference in cost for a one mile? Thank you. I had seen it, but I'd forgotten it, thank you, that was it.
And essentially what it amounts to is, with a two mile ridership, you can get rid of essentially about four rounds, four drivers, and then with one mile, about one round. That's what it comes down to.
But we're all, we're not gonna eliminate one bus.
Well, that's, one mile doesn't, I mean, honestly, one mile doesn't make sense. If you're gonna do something, you do the two mile secondary to have some, whatever, impact.
Can you repeat every bit of that? I mean, just, the two miles equates to?
Two mile ridership equates for a hundred thousand dollar savings. One mile ridership equates to about twenty-five dollars.
But if you did that, it's not gonna impact IMS bus installing one kid.
Yeah.
That's not gonna save anyone. I mean, you can add it up strategically, but it doesn't, that doesn't apply really.
It's not a good, could be better.
It's not even half a bus, it's not even a quarter of a bus.
It's tough to do that. One mile, I'm honestly, one mile would not make sense, you know?
I'm surprised that there's so many syphilis high school bus riders who can't let, I thought the high school, we had the lowest ridership.
I think Citrus is the highest, right?
Yeah.
Well, La Canto has none, because they're all outside the two mile ratio.
You know, is it Fernando County, I think? A bunch of them all, they tried to eliminate the two mile, they're all going back to it, because it's a safety issue. I was, I was driving through Clay County last month. High school got out, because they had thirty buses in the high school. Bus flew across the street, half a block down the street, opened the door, and came through, turned out. It was like, it was a block.
Yeah.
It's not just us.
They went across the big road.
They went across the road, that's exactly what they did.
Now, if you've seen, you know, Hillsborough County is experiencing issues right now. With kids crossing major thoroughfares, Hillsborough Avenue to be exact. And they're having some issues with kids getting hit by cars. So, they've actually contracted out now little shuttle buses to bring the kids across the street.
So, that's the issue across the street. I thought there was something in legislation also about bus stops having, something about not, not having the bus stop where it required the student to cross, like highway.
I have not seen, but we typically, yeah, we...
Our buses drop off.
That's why sometimes you, if the bus is going south on the road, people say, "You gotta go all the way back around where they drop you off," so...
Is there...
You crawled past my screen.
I get the phone calls, we just passed one.
And I know Ms. Farmer does an exceptional job constantly monitoring, reevaluating, trying to reduce routes and all of that. With regards to some of our specialty schools, is there, and it's not to me simply a matter of cost savings, but also, you know, one of the big complaints I hear from parents of why they don't use the busing system is the amount of time on the bus. So, is there anything that kind of is a win-win, where we could have a centrally located, where, you know, maybe there is a direct non-stop flight from La Canto High School to AES, or La Canto High School to, you know, to somewhere else, where a parent would, maybe that they're going home to work, they drop them off there.
Like for AES in particular, you mentioned that, they all go to Christopher High School. All buses take the kids to Christopher.
All buses go.
They didn't take that bus, right?
That's Atlanta. You jump on there and then you go to.
They talk, on some of those special schools, parents do have the option to take their students right to Syphilis High School.
And hop on, okay. So, that's even...
That's what we knew without Renaissance, quite frankly. The students all ride the same buses as everyone. They come to their school, like the high school or IMS. We got the shuttle that just picks those kids up and takes them to the Renaissance.
You know, I'm not sure what is appropriate time during life, but we read all the time in sound up about people complaining because their buses are empty. You need to be aware, people, they're only full twice a day. At the end of the run, when they're dropping them all off, and at the beginning of the run, when they're all full, and they take them home. They get off one by one, and halfway through the run, half the kids are off the bus, that's the way it works.
We do feel those calls, and we do...
And if you're elementary, they may not see you.
Yeah.
That's the other thing.
Black windows, looks like there's nobody on the bus, and the bus is full, so I don't know why people don't think about that. They'll ride, kids ride on the bus, ridiculous.
They all don't get off at that one street.
Thought they see the bus, there's no one on there, why would they do that?
It's the funniest complaint that I've ever heard, that it's like, you just have to think about this for about two minutes and figure out...
It's fine, I know, I knew there was a reason why I didn't read.
Mr. Kenny was supposed to request earlier about parents, a lot of time on the bus. Some of those kids get on the bus pretty early in order to get to where they're going by the time it starts, you know, and it's just, yeah.
And I know that's a choice, sometimes it's just a matter, especially if, and we're excited, if someone from Citrus High's district decides they wanna go to Crystal River's Health Academy program, and they have that option, and they're gonna have a long, there's just no getting around it.
We're currently researching moving our teen parent program into Crystal River High School. So, and one of the reasons, one of many reasons is transportation. We're already bussing over there anyway, for the Health Academy and for AES. So, it would make sense, logistically, to do that. And then we also have a debate here, in the school itself, so...
That makes a lot of sense.
Does anybody know what is the status of the AAM start time for high school legislation?
I have not heard of any changes. I know that was up there where it could start before eight o'clock, I believe it was, but I've not heard.
Did it pass it, not pass it, did it...
I don't know, they sort of make super tenses in that.
The time? The time, the starting time, is that what it was?
The last time I saw it on there, that it had stopped. It was making no progress.
I didn't see it going anywhere initially.
And that should not be legislated, it's a...
I agree. We could list a few other, House Wilson and Senate Wilson.
If that did pass, we would have to do some rearranging of the...
Well, yeah.
It was closer to eight o'clock in high school.
Oh, I know, well, those Clay County, these kids are getting out of school at one-thirty, quarter to two. They're like, what time do these four kids start?
They just start right at seven, if it is... Hey, we're not messing with school time.
Good.
We've done that.
So, to recap, that's kind of the difference in the savings for the one mile versus two mile secondary.
But it's not really, because you're not gonna, if you eliminate one mile ridership, you're still not gonna save, you're not gonna save a penny.
The one mile's not gonna really do much for you. That's a, that's a, an aggregate, I mean, you're pulling pieces here and there. But the two miles, if you gotta do anything, the two miles where you would go.
But the, boy, the safety difference even, and to me, getting kids to school and making them do it, that's, seems like a, it's a lot of money on one side. We could start a program just to try and get kids to come to school, and it costs that, so...
There is a process by which the state can request funding for less than two mile ridership. And we have done that for many years, and it's never been successful. Because the great period, then you determine that a route to school is unsafe, far exceeds what we would consider.
That's brilliant.
Because we specifically did that for Forest Ridge, and if one of them, it was permanent.
And that's really truly what we realize, is the safety is...
That's, yeah, that's an item we're never gonna leave out.
The next item was, we wanted to see what the superintendent and chairman was gonna request the Education Foundation to support. And you can see, these are all the items, and I believe that list was submitted to the Education Foundation last week, am I correct?
This was that list that we all had, uh...
They asked for a list of items, they were gonna delete, do, do, to me, and I've seen that they've been willing to fund some of their programs, so...
They fund any of this currently?
Yes.
They currently do some of it.
Quite good. They do the science fair in Massillon, they just, they have a river project, they do the academic team.
School related?
No, they don't do the academic team.
Mark?
They do part of the welcome back, they do, they have a festival piece.
And then about...
So, these are the items that we're asking them to support us on?
Why is gifted education on here, why is that not responsible?
We're just asking them for funding, if they give it to us, then we give it to them.
Well, I would hate to have anything be, after a couple of years, dependent upon external funding, something like it with education, then professional development. I would think these are all external programs, that if we don't have them, we don't have them. But if education is required, then we must provide that, so...
Yeah, this was on all the gifted education budget, these were like extras that they wished that they could have.
They don't currently have professional development?
No, they do.
So, why do we have a senior responsibility for that?
These are the extras, I believe, that gifted was requesting.
One of the gifted items is a program that actually, like a lot of software and business and patent, but they basically built it down, put it in the one world.
So, it's almost like they're looking for grant money to do something that they're not currently doing?
Some of that was ten, two, it was seven?
Yes.
Correct.
I think, I wanna say it has to do, is it, does that, or have to do with Odyssey of the Mind? Was that one of, I think it was, it was, it was part of that program that they, um...
But we used to always do Odyssey of the Mind.
Yeah, this is a manipulative, now they've got like a software whole course. Yeah. We used to get FTE, I mean, we used to get weighted FTE for gifted.
That's been a long time.
Oh, yeah.
Well, they're in the block, they're in the block right now, I'm still getting the block grant.
And they're already, yeah. So, this is the item that, I don't know, this one that they indicate when they're gonna come back to you?
They were gonna use their executive staff, as I said, the, a lot of these pieces they already fund, and they were gonna use their executive staff, and then they'll present it back to their board next, next month, which would be the main due. Like you said, they also want to be guaranteed, ask the family, they want to find some things that are actually on the school.
Why, why would you want to do that?
Because they, well, they also have great money for foundations that pay part of the rest, so they have to do it specifically.
That's just after the foundation foundation.
They funded a lot of, right, student programs.
Right.
What's the Rockdunk Academy students that are serviced in Citrus County? I've been looking at the rate request of fifty thousand, is that covering?
I was gonna say, Ms. Nobles is counting.
That's for the mentors that we provide in the classroom, that's not for the program itself. Some districts have gone to volunteers and trying not to do that, because, you know, they're a very dependable group.
The fifty thousand actually does include maintaining the mentors in the classrooms for the avid teachers. And then I believe there's some portion of that for the, um, project.
Total number of students? We're putting that together.
I think it's, it's okay.
I'm thinking around six hundred, six thousand, a hundred.
It's low and high on the secondary.
Sixteen, twelve, about sixteen. Okay?
Thank you.
So, also looking at our FTE forecast, you remember last time we met, I told you there was a revision, because there was some issue, the state software forecasting model, they then...
Oh, and I'm sorry, let me just go back to one project on this list before we go. It was something that I recently learned about that I didn't know existed, and that's something called the River Project. Kenny, do you know what that is?
Yes.
You do, okay. That present...
My sons had to go through it, that's why I know.
I was really, really surprised, like, that I had never heard of it. It's about sexuality, perhaps just...
Abstinence?
Abstinence, but it's a lot about sexuality and relationships and that sort of thing. And it, and this project was funded by a federal grant, and then they lost it. And now, Education Foundation funds it, but it's all funded by some church groups, and I'm not even sure who else, so...
Black government also.
Black government, that's right, they were big supporters of that. So, I'm wondering if, um...
It probably isn't a bad idea.
Yeah, maybe we, you know, maybe we should have, the person who is the instructor, do come and share, that's what they're doing.
Please understand that, yes, Ms. Deutchman, at that time, federal grants were provided for that. If you remember, the Life Choice Care Center actually did provide a lot of that instruction, and I believe that the board has, and it's been quite some time since the board has had that. So, Mr. Mullin and I have been talking, and then Mr. Sheffield as well, as part of the curriculum updates, we're gonna include some information in regards to the health program and the health classes, the standards, and then that program, which is a key component. But it has actually went through a couple of different names. River Project is one that we actually tied to that. But if you will, Chairman, either May or June...
We'll look at it, but I definitely would like to get it on there, because I know, I, Ms. Alguretta met with some community members that, one of the things that a lot of people may not realize, legislation requires that we teach abstinence. And for those that don't understand that, regardless of what any individual does or does not want to have done, the state law does provide, does require that abstinence be...
Teen violence and dating, a lot of those requirements that just entered in the last couple of years.
And it, you know, having a child that's gone through it now, both in the elementary and all the way through to the high school, it's been a good conversation, it really has. And I think it would be good for the staff to, I mean, for the board members to see in those presentations, and at least, for no other reason, also just to have the community have an understanding. So, we'll get, we'll, we'll see where our agenda's flying, and we'll make it happen.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
That's all right, very good. Thank you, Mr. Coler. So, we did revise that forecast, as I told you last time, due to that error in the forecasting model. So, this is the revision that has now been used in this last update to the state. So, when they're putting together the final budget, these numbers will be used. So, instead of the unweighted forecast of fourteen thousand one seventy-three, we're now using fourteen thousand four twenty-five. And the weighted went from fifteen two-two-one to fifteen three-thirty, or increase in the weighting about a hundred and nine students. So, looking at the House's budget and what their based allocation is, I'm thinking the impact should be an additional four hundred thousand dollars of revenue to them, okay? So, that's, and I did verify with the state that they did use this in our last update as far as the new number and also the new property value number, because that was also an issue too, making sure they used the correct taxable value for our FEFP forecast. So, looking at unit changes based on FTE, we wanted to give you an update on where that's at right now. And in the elementary world, Central Ridge, due to their FTE count is slated to lose two and a half instructional units, LPS a half a unit, IPS Christopher Primary School Pleasant Grove, down one unit, and Home Assas will gain one unit. And then also, the last three remaining elementary schools, Forest Ridge, Fernando, and IPS, would lose their clerical unit to come in line with all the elementary schools that had lost a clerical unit. So, and that's all through attrition and moving people to the open positions and everything.
Yeah, our student, check the student enrollment, we have no idea what the impact is now on Hope John Paul continuing, and they're pledging to increase their enrollment.
We have not even planned on any issues when they're closed, so we did not modify anything out of the remaining...
And that could be an impact.
That could be, right. And I, I don't know, is that just for one year? I think that they're gonna see how it goes, or...
I think so, but they, they said that they were going to do very heavy marketing and try to enroll more students, and we don't know what's happening with the voucher issue, but either...
That's still, that's still there, it's the overall...
So, you know, I, so how we make our projections, I don't know accurately until actually school starts and see what shows up. At this point, with this particular...
Well, and that's where we're at right now, we like, a lot of elementary, especially at elementary, kindergarten is always, you know, unknown. So, you, we, we make our projections, we say this is what we're doing until we get to the beginning of school, right there at the, at the start, to see if we need to make any adjustments based on enrollment, especially kindergarten. They tend to come in, and you don't even know, anticipate them, so they all, they all understand that.
It's an ongoing and regular process from here until first month of school?
Actually, from here to class size in October.
Those couple of things going on, it really affects us.
So, staffing changes at middle school, Citrus Creek's middle school would gain two units. IMS currently down two instructional units, and potentially the student services TOSA. And then the Christopher Middle School will be down one unit.
And why the TOSA?
It's still, we're trying to decide whether they're gonna keep or not based on, their change, their enrollment just went up based on the revisions, and we're trying to decide this.
Do they follow the staff?
Right. Right, and that's what we're looking at, we're evaluating.
But if you reflect back to earlier, where you looked at the number of students who are administrated, they're up there, so that's why we've decided to balance that by keeping the behavior TOSA.
Yeah. And then the high school, of course, that's the big one, that's the one that we have the most conversation with. And these aren't set in stone, but they're certainly, we're projecting right now, because we have to have follow-up meetings with them. And these aren't set in stone, but they're certainly, we're projecting right now because we have to have follow-up meetings with them again based on what they look like with their scores and their students. But La Canto would be down thirteen units, plus one clerical, Citrus down four, and Christopher down one. And for the most part, I believe they've all pretty much hit those numbers where they've worked out their schedules that those are accomplishable. The other thing is with custodians, we're kind of proposing to move the custodian square foot allocation to twenty-five thousand. If we do that, we are looking at certain schools would actually downsize custodians. And currently, we have about eleven or thirteen openings in custodians, so there's, there's no issue. What we found is even with those openings, we, we can't even find subs to fill those positions. It's really been a tough year on custodians. I don't know why. Uh, we've had, we've had a hard year with teachers, but with custodians, it seems to be, this is hard.
What's the outfit from now, square foot?
It's around twenty or twenty-one thousand.
What's that?
Yeah. Twenty-one, twenty, somewhere up there. So we're looking at twenty-five now, um, and looking to make sure that's a, it's a minimum. Yeah, I.
We want to be real clear about the custodial piece too, that, um, the principal said they'd make it work. And, um, John Colasani and Michael Billings and Mr. Block and some of us have met. They do believe it's doable, but you will not see the same, um, services in the schools in the privacy because they're just going to be down to custodian and we'll just have to prepare for that.
And that's, that was really going to be my question, because I, I know you can change the square footage covering, but the, the bottom line is, it's going to affect what gets maintained regularly. It's also going to be that, as it is now, I can tell you, teachers are already often helping by bringing trash to a centralized area to try and help out. And, oh, I, I know of one administrator that comes in and vacuums and cleans bathrooms. Because they, because they want to keep as much of that, their, their funding going towards students. And so I, i- if you all see that this is something that's doable, but I'm, the only thing that really, I have some reservations about, you know, the two hundred thousand dollar savings. Are we really just giving it in one hand and we're going to have to get it back here in another year or so?
Well, here's the only thing, we, we can, we have to attempt this to try and see how it's going to go. If we get into it, we see that this is not working, we get feedback from the principals, uh, custodians, that this is just not a viable plan, then we can come back and say, this isn't working. We need to replace some custodians out there. I do believe we have to give it an opportunity to see if it would work.
And it may be different at different schools. Nationally, you have a brand new school that requires less maintenance than some of our older schools that require a lot of, they'll both reach the people.
And, and I'll tell you, I, because again, I come from a family of custodians and, and directors of custodians, and so it's hard for me not to look at the floors and look at the, they really do a wonderful job. And I'll tell you, come summertime, um, the, uh, keeping up on the technology, uh, the difference in, in coats and materials and having to do less coats. You all have been reducing, and that staff's been just doing a, uh, yeoman's job of, of just keeping up our schools. So I do know it's a tough time to also be a custodian, both having the job and then we can't, they can't find replacements. So I, even if we said we were going to hire all of them, I know that's challenging just to get a permanent one in there. So I recognize that, but I will tell you, this board member at least has no problem if you guys say it can't be done, saying, I understand that.
And all this equipment, it does include, currently there's three here in the district office. We will be reducing by one here too, so. So those are the, the ones.
So I, I, I'm just looking for clarification too, because we're looking at how many will be reduced. So one at the district level, but you currently have three at the district level.
Go from three to two.
Okay, and then at the elementary, that would be from two to one?
Those would be from five to four.
Five to four.
I don't think we would ever want to go less than three in a state, because that would.
Floral City and Homeless Assot have three, that's the least.
Okay.
Those three elementary schools have five now. All the other ones have four, so they're going to be down to four.
And then the middle school, that's five to four?
Six to five.
Six to five. Okay, that makes them. And then the high school?
La Canto would go down to nine. That would be consistent with the other two high schools.
So who, how many do they currently have?
Uh, eleven.
They have eleven custodial staff?
Right. They have eleven custodial positions. I would say they have loads.
Okay. Okay.
And that's one of those, that campus is not just L H S, but L H S, L M S, L P S. Those are those older schools that tend to take it a little bit, so.
Uh, and actually, L M S is, is functioned with, um, I think it's six, five or six, whatever.
Is that's.
Least amount, that's why you don't see them listed on the middle school. They actually had the least amount this year that they've functioned.
And again, they really have continued to do just an amazing job with less everything, so.
Um, so issues with the current budget, of course, we've spoken to you about some of these issues before. Just wanted to bring them back up to you, but once again, we're estimating that deficit this year, about one point six million. So we have to be cognizant of that to overcome that number. Right now, we're just forecasting an increase in F R S to look to be about three hundred and seventy-five thousand. That's based on the new rates coming out from the legislature. Most of that is coming from the unfunded liability, uh, portion of that. Of course, the contractual obligated increases we have that are mandated, we figure that's about six hundred thousand. Uh, we have a programmer analyst that's currently funded a race to the top. That funding goes, goes away as of June thirtieth. We didn't have to assume that, that funding, that was part of the, uh, the initial deal. Dual enrollment, interesting. Dual enrollment allocation, we're looking, uh, as an increase by about forty-six thousand dollars and textbooks by fifteen thousand. We have seen kids, students, take advantage of dual enrollment to the point where they have just blown through the, the allocation that we get from the state. Now, you know, we do pay the, the college for that, so we're looking to have to increase those numbers to be able to effectively pay for those students taking those classes. And the textbook allocation we get is so small for dual enrollment that, um, we're having to increase that as well.
And that's what they negotiated.
Correct, that's half the rate.
Will you remind everybody what we pay this year?
And?
In dual enrollment?
I believe we have, do you want to help me out? How much are we paid so far in dual enrollment?
Uh, we're projected to pay, um, about, our, our net cost is going to be about seventy-five thousand for just the tuition piece. And probably our textbooks are going to be around forty to forty-five when we're done with the, the school year.
Remember that tuition is like half?
It is, it is.
So if it would have been the full amount, you'd look at that. Now, I know there were some questions in Tallahassee, there was some conversation, they were looking to address that issue. I have not heard whether, I haven't heard.
It really looked like the issue of the textbooks, because even though our books are good for five, six, seven years, it's amazing that the college textbooks are good for whatever professor decides to change or how.
Of semester.
Every semester.
They don't care.
Yeah, because now they rent them out. How many eat ones are on it?
Can I ask you, right from that, and just a rough numbers fine, of this seventy-five thousand that we're looking at as far as cost for dual enrollment, what would you estimate the number of students that we're serving with that?
Uh, typically, it has been about fifty-five students each semester from each of the three schools.
Fifty-five per school per semester?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Three to thirty kids?
Thanks.
Three to, classes, I guess. All right, so some other issues, the Play-Doh funding, that's previously, that's currently out of the rural grant this year. Uh, we would have to assume that because we do not know if we're going to receive the rural grant. So we have to, um, budget for that in the general fund. Transportation operations, uh, we see increasing pricing for tires, parts. We estimated that to be about two hundred thousand. We, we saved quite a bit of money this past year in tires because we purchased them the year before, before they went up. So we've pretty much ran out of that whole allocation, uh, so we're having to deal with that impact. White fleet, uh, it's, it's aging to keep it running. It's, uh, we haven't bought a new white fleet in four years or so, five years. I mean, it's been a while. The cost of those parts and repairs are going up. We estimate about thirty thousand. Flood insurance, uh, I know Ms. Ernich has a presentation for you later, but you know, you've been hearing all about flood insurance. We will be impacted by flood insurance as well, so we're estimating that impact this year, the estimated twenty-five percent increase, to be about twenty-three thousand dollars on, on some of the buildings that we have to have flood insurance on. And then, of course, we have the issue of continued with the declining enrollment. And then the, the question that I posed to you last time was need to increase the fund balance. And I don't know if that's something we want to talk about as, do we want to come to a number that we want to, uh, budget? To start increasing our fund balance budget?
Yes, Brian.
We need to, we're going to keep the bond rating.
Yeah, so I just need to know from y'all what number you want me to budget for to actually add to the, to the, but, to fund.
Where are we now?
For the A-plus bond rating, what do we need to be to have that?
Well, there's no set number. They just want to see you not to use the fund balance as we have the last four or five years. They want you, we need to start building it back up. When I spoke to them at the last rating, I, I told them that our, kind of our floor width that we liked was around five million dollars. Of course, we haven't seen that.
And that was not the only reason why our rating went down. We also had Duke Energy, we also had the declining, um, values overall, so.
The economy of the county doesn't.
So we could, even if we had increased that, we still may have had the declining of, of that, so. I, you know, one of the challenges we're, we're going to be facing is, I think is first, trying not to use the fund balance is the first thing. And at this point, if we can continue to maintain our services and put one dollar in there, I would be thrilled to know that we didn't use a dollar at this point. But I think that we, we've got a balance of, we still have some unknown costs here on the full budget. This is progress without a question, but unless this board is willing to say we're going to go to four percent of this year on it, and I think in order for us to do some of that, that means that we're going to have to look at cutting some programs. And I'm, right now, I'm not willing to do that, but I am willing to say, I would like to say that we maintain our, our fund balance. Which is at least still going in a better, in a direction that we haven't gone, so that's just my feeling. And I know Ms. Bryant's, and I value it because I appreciate when she says, get that fund balance back up.
I think there's a reasonable amount that we should object as far as, it's basically a nest egg. And we need to have that because we're, we, because of our property appraiser, we know what the climate will be for budgeting needs for twenty-fourteen, fifteen, but we can't rest assured that we're not going to be in the same boat with the mystery of Duke Energy and what they feel they owe for their tax contributions. So with that said, I think the question is, how much should we budget to save? Every family should be asking the same question, no matter what their, what their situation is. It's, I think we need to always plan to save. So with that, you're, you're in the driver's seat looking at the budget with a microscope. What do you, what do you suggest we do?
I would suggest that we do start putting money away, maybe have a plan over the next four years to save a million dollars. Two fifty a year for the next four years. That's certainly my recommendation, but if I show you on the, on the, uh, this page, you can see currently with the budget that we have right now, rolled everything through, we're still short about one point one million. So we have to come up with those.
Before we get into savings.
Right. But I think as part of, we, you know, we still have several months to go through this process. Is that something that you want me to, to start factoring in and looking at when we start looking at how we are, um, producing our budget for next year? Or are we saying that we're going to be happy with a balanced budget? I mean, so that, that's why I just want the conversation.
Well, it's, it's hard to go out to the community and say that we need to cut programs to build our fund balance. Or that we need to ask them to come up with money to build our fund balance. So, uh, you know, I think again, if we can get to a point that we have not used our fund balance and that we put a dollar in there now, I'm not saying I would like to see us keep saving more, but I'm saying I think it's very hard to say, we're going to commit to putting two hundred and fifty thousand dollars away today when we still have these underlying issues.
What's our, what's our, what's our obligation to maintain a certain number?
Is three percent. That's the state guidelines, and then if you go below two.
It's as far as three. If we drop below the three, then.
You have to come, we have to notify you and the board, I mean, you and, and Department of Education of the issue that we're dropping below three. They want to know a plan on how you're going to get out of that. If you go below two, we notify the board, we also notify the O E. They then come down and they right-size your budget essentially to get it back in, in line.
And are we below that now?
No.
What is?
Currently, we're projecting, uh, fund balance be at three point four nine percent. We try to always be around that three and a half is the board policy, um, that's.
And I'd be happy if we're at three point five and we can put that dollar in, and I've got one I can give you on the way out.
At some point, we go to jail.
Well, I don't think.
Yeah, we did.
You were going to jail a couple of years ago because your fund balance got too low.
Um, well, was it Bravard or?
Well, I know B A N P is in some issues right now.
That's the one.
Yeah, but.
But they just kept spending, I don't know how they got to that point, but they kept spending.
They've got to budget twenty-five teachers.
We, we have reached a peak of, in that fund balance, with the, the healthiest that we, we were, it was like eleven percent, it was.
Yeah, it was pretty high.
Pretty high. So we went from eleven.
And we needed, and we spent.
Yeah.
Down to three points.
But we did that, we did that strategically, knowing that. But we would need those funds to be able to get over the cliff, so to speak.
Right.
We just didn't think it would go on as long as it did.
No, I remember I've had.
That, that, just looking at that historical spending from the fund balance, that's where, you know, it has a saver mentality to protect us from, you know, the next storm. You know, I definitely want to, I, I don't want to budget anything that's going to pull us back up to eleven percent because back to the perception from the public, when you're cutting and you've got this nest egg there, I can certainly see why people would not be able to stomach a cut in custodial staff when you're sitting with eleven percent in your fund balance, but when we're down to three point four nine and, and board policy is to keep it at three point five, we need to be proactive and budget some savings in there so that we don't fall short. So with that said, you know, whether it's a dollar contribute by Thomas or whatever we need to do, I definitely want to try to encourage us to save.
Mr. Block, I'm going to put you on the spot, but it's been said out in the community that you're hiding money in the budget. So, um, I would like, I know you're not. And I feel like our board members know you're not because they have worked through this budget from, for many, many months. And I just wanted to publicly say that I do not believe that we're hiding money in the budget, and I don't think any board member feels that way either, so.
No, certainly, we go through audits every year and they, they certainly dissect our entire portfolio of dollars and budget. They're even asking me the questions, why is the fund balance continuing to decline? The, the rating agency are asking me, why is the fund balance?
There's approval party right there. We're hiding money. We have more money left over than.
Yeah, so I mean, that's a, we have made a concerted effort not to do away with the programs, not to, to have an impact on the classroom and to use the fund balance. I think now we've just got to the point where we can't do that anymore, as I've been certainly saying that up here. And also, we've had another issue with declining enrollment. We've had a double whammy, um, so we've, we've hit rock bottom where we got to start coming back up the mountain, so.
And we were building them at a tremendous rate, those fund balances, because that was certainly a concerted effort by this board. You, when you came into that position, Ms. Bryant standing on her chair on a regular basis saying, give me more's fund balance. Um, and it, and it was, and it was valuable because it did get us through, uh, a very tough time. And I, I certainly value that we need to not use our fund balance if at all possible. At the same token, um, you know, we're, we're real close to a balanced budget here. And if we can not be, and this is what we've been faced with every year, we get to this point and it looks, and we feel like, okay, the light's at the end of the tunnel, and then we have the last couple of weeks of session and we get a new added unfunded mandate. So it, it's difficult to today, sit there and, you know, we had last year, at least, I think you've already budgeted for this year, but we had that F R S contribution of one point four million?
It was a little more than, I believe, one and a half, one point six, but, and that was something that, that was the best hidden secret around.
Yeah.
Tell anybody.
So, I mean, I think that going into our budget cycle right now with this situation is encouraging.
I, I, I'm in agreement with you. I think so far the numbers have been rolling through. We've done a good job. We hope to continue, we hope we get some good numbers out of next week's session that we can see that maybe the, the assumptions we've built in here reflect the same thing. The other thing, uh, I know last time Ms. Bryant asked the question about looking at some of our other schools and what's happening out there and the efficiencies of them. We did, and it was very quick. We looked at it very quick as far as our small schools and, um, what can we do with those and what would happen? There would be some issues definitely with rezoning. We would have to use porables out there. We just can't pick them all up and put them in one nice neat little package. Uh, so we would definitely have impact, uh, we would definitely impact multiple schools in that, in that, uh, review. Now, I, I can't say that it's not accomplishable. I'm saying we did a very quick version review over it to look at it, to kind of start that process that Ms. Bryant had asked about. The other thing that, uh, we've looked at is Renaissance and the potential to contract out to, to a private vendor to provide those, uh, alternatives. vendor to provide those alternative services. So we wanted to actually talk to you all about that today to see what your feelings were, your direction, et cetera.
Is this a charter?
No, not the one we're looking at. Here's what happened, we contacted several other districts and asked what they do with their alternative schools and how they provided services. And when I spoke to the superintendent, Marion County, they have a provider in Marion County who's been doing their alternative education for about 19 years. And they gave us the name and contact, we met with them, we got a few preliminaries. Mr. Mullin, if the board will give us that direction today, I would like to send Mr. Mullin up to look at the curriculum and, of course, invite the chairman and maybe a couple of people from Ed Services to look at their curriculum. Mr. Blocker has done some preliminary numbers, and I know we don't base everything just on budget and numbers because it is about our kids, and Ms. Joseph is right, it's about our at-risk kids, and there's potential savings of probably about $500,000, $700,000 with the way they provide services. Now, I will tell you, they employ more behavior specialists than we have been allowed, or with our budget that we've been able to provide. So if we can, if you all give us a blessing to do that, we can move forward, get some numbers, get some data, bring it back to you as an option. Mr. Mullin and Mr. Blocker went, or Mr. Bishop went out yesterday, spoke to the staff, we've got HR looking at all the positions that we currently have at Renaissance, because we knew once we had a discussion today, rumors would start flying, so we wanted to make sure they heard it correct from the horse's mouth. So I asked for Mike and Johnny to go out there, he spoke to the staff, he would certainly meet individually each staff member to go with certification and to place people in our district if we were to move forward and make this happen. It has not been decided to do it, of course, because the board had to give us that approval. It's just in the preliminary stages and we just thought that it would be something that we should pursue and is going to.
Is there, with, with Marion County, I don't know if they share this, is there any idea of, is it a long-term obligation?
It's a 12-month contract, they renew that contract every 12 months. So every year they renegotiate their contract. So no, it is not a long-term commitment, again, they've been there for 19 years, but every year they renegotiate their contracts, so they're right for one, two years. And they currently have approximately 200 of the four students in their school.
And how many do we have, right?
30.
30, two establishments.
Yeah, we, between 100 and 30, I guess. It's a very.
I know.
What are the levels of programs that they run? We were always talking about needing a budget for the kids who have a claim.
You mean for counseling or?
Which is being.
We talked about different layers, you know.
Okay, they take all their behavior, anything, it's an alternative to expulsion, they stand at any level that they, that we would expel, they will take them. And that's what Marion County does. And they also have a partnership with the centers and several psychologists and, and then I.
They explain multiple levels, but I really need to see it to compare it to ours before I can tell you how that compares to.
What do you think, performance data? I mean, we got a nice letter from one of the teachers at Renaissance, I don't know where they got the data from, but some of the things that they identified is tracking, that would be important for us to compare, I thought was very.
We agree. And they're going to provide that.
Mr. Simon, directed, Mr. Simon, similar data on Renaissance. You know, in all fairness, you know, typically alternative ed students are going to be level one. They're level one when you give them to the school, two weeks later, the expectation shouldn't be that they're level three magically.
And we don't graduate from, from Renaissance, so that.
I thought when looking at it, it would probably see a big difference.
Certainly, you probably wouldn't see much difference in our own data.
You know, as far as like, we have the, the partnership with the sheriff's office, would those be things, and I know this is hard to answer, but would those be things that we'd be able to continue?
Yeah, those things we can work through, they do have an SRO at their facility.
Yeah, they employ their own SRO.
Yeah, so I mean, we do have to work out some of those contractual issues on how that would work, but I would foresee this to be as seamless as possible, almost, without it being contracted, we'd almost want to have it like, just like being one of our schools.
And you, you were saying that they, they employ more behavior specialists?
They do, they have behaviors, but they, they, they have a different staffing pattern than what we use.
Will our staff be considered for placement?
Absolutely.
With them, or do they bring in their own?
They would want, they, they would not be school board employees, so that our, our staff would.
It would be our goal to place our staff with us, because I would think that's what our staff would.
But that's not to say they don't have the option to do.
I mean, we can't stop.
We're, we wouldn't go, you're, so you're saying we're, you would be looking at placing Citrus County staff in Citrus County schools, not trying to necessarily absorb our staff into someone else's situation.
Our goal would be to let them, because they understand FRS, I would say. So our goal would be to find a home for everybody that would be.
It's instructional.
That's correct.
And Mr., we've lost the administrator out there, so.
And that's why, you know, we have a lot of projected openings for next year, we have not allowed principals to post anything until we get clear on, on some of the cuts that we've had to make so we can find homes for people that are affected by that. And this would be certainly the same.
Is there another company being explored, or is this?
That's the only company that we're familiar with that locally, certainly if somebody else wants to approach us and talk to us, we'd be.
Well, that brings up a question that we had last year with, you know, YMCA and so forth, would we need to put out an FRP? Because that would be something we'd at least need to.
Professional services, we may be from, I believe.
And that, and if that is, it's, but I think we need to know as we go into looking down that, especially if you're starting up conversations.
And you could, you could essentially piggyback the Marion County bid as well.
I mentioned to you, and having the chances for it all, was to contact the Department of Judicial Justice and the sheriff, any body that has control of behavior, deals with behavior of students in particular. And if, we could seek some funding from them to, to the Renaissance school, operating it as we're operating it now, but with funding, with money needed coming from them, have that chance at all to explore that. And I'm wondering if that could be something that you could explore, make some calls on, to see if.
I was certainly, uh.
Money's available.
Ms. Dofcek can probably look into that, she's the grant writer.
And we do know that Mr. Chadry, Mr. Chadry, and he was, and has that department, and he would have some insight into how it functions.
But even our local Cypress Creek contracts out.
I understand, but I think we should have all the.
Oh, no, no, I agree, I just mean, it's interesting to me that even our local juvenile services has contracted theirs out locally.
Right, you could probably, probably tell us where to go and who to see and who to talk with and how.
And I don't even know, does, does, I always forget, is it G-Force One or some?
G-Force.
G-Force, do they even do, I mean, alternative schools, I don't know, because I know they have different programs.
This used to be a DJJ group, they did both, the alternative school and DJJ, they got the DJJ part and the alternative school for.
Yeah, I understand that you want to have an opportunity to research options, I definitely understand that and respect the flexibility. What I am concerned about, I, I know that you're limited as far as staff, but for, who did you say you wanted to send? Mike Mullins or Mr. Bull or somebody?
Mr. Mullin, Eastern.
So they will have a frontline opportunity to see things for themselves. This is a big, huge deal we're, we're looking at. Is there any way we can bring these people in here?
Oh, absolutely.
Oh, yeah, that's a plan.
It's so, it's so much in the infancy stage right now, we want to just get you all's direction to say, yes, this is a worthy issue.
Find information and bring it back to me.
I think.
They would come back into a board presentation.
And, and I think one of the challenges that we've talked about is, two years ago, we were operating at 200% FTE. Now we're at, I think, 150% FTE from at least the budget report I remember off the top of my head, because Home Assassin, Floral City and this one.
The cost per pupil is very high.
So, you know, they're suggesting then operating it at the FTE?
Or just under.
Or?
Yes.
Or just under?
I think it was 90, it was 90%.
Well, what happens if you don't have certified teachers and you're not in FRS?
Right.
They are certified teachers, it is, may not be staffed the way we're staffed.
They don't have to be certified in that area?
Well.
Well, they can be out of field.
That's what I mean.
Like our teachers, I mean, we have out-of-field teachers too, that's not, that's not unusual. We have out-of-field teachers as well, especially in art field areas.
I think we just want to get direction, is this something you're, you're wanting us to maybe to explore, to look at an alternative?
Well, you're wanting, you are asking us, you want to explore, are we okay with it? That's probably the more appropriate question. We're not asking for you to initiate this. You have presented to us that you want to initiate it. Are we okay with that?
Right, we would like to look at it, but we need your blessing to do it, because if we don't get your blessing, then we.
Well, we've had conversations about Renaissance and small schools before, so we're coming back after Ms. Bryant asked us those questions last, two weeks ago, about the schools and the efficiency or whatever, these are some ideas, and we've come back to discuss.
I think basically, if you have no intention of entertaining this thought, there's no point in us spending our time into that. There's other things we can do.
I would say we probably don't know enough about it to even make that decision, so if you want to bring information back, I'm somewhat opposed to it, I think that's feasible, all we can say, is right?
And I think that's, that is.
Yeah.
I, I think one of the things that we've, we've just talked about is, how do we have long-term cost reductions? And how, and, and this board has said, we believe in the mission of Renaissance, we believe we need a placement tool so that we can put students so that they're not held back at the schools and creating challenges at their home schools. But the challenge that I think we've wrestled with is, how do we rehabilitate instead of simply house students? And how do we do that economically without cutting other programs at other schools?
Well, like Vicki pointed out, those considerations, that seamless curriculum connection, and like you just mentioned, what is the long-term savings? So we're looking at saving $700,000.
Potentially, those are round numbers.
So if it's a, yeah.
That's a big amount, though, on an ongoing basis?
Well, absolutely.
That's a big dollar amount. Especially when we're talking about the list of items that you just showed, that well surpasses many of those, those things. So that goes back to saying, if we're not doing something, do we go back and start having to look at those programs and cutting those things?
I think we also need to explore a possible funding.
I think that's a great other thing to look at.
We just didn't want to bring this to you a month from now with all the facts work out and have the question asked, why are you doing this? We never instructed you to look at that.
You know, the challenge, though, this is, this is the end of April.
We've been down a lot of other issues, so we're just simply trying to get direction from the start. We didn't want the staff to hear about it or read about it in the Chronicle or hear about it online, so that's why we told them yesterday that we were going to bring it up with the board. We're not, we don't know enough about it to tell you it's a great idea or it's not a good idea at this point. But when we explore it and come back with a presentation, we just want to make sure that it's something that you're interested in hearing.
And this is the end of April, this, I mean, there's a very narrow of even whether anything could be even logically pulled together in that period of time. But it does go back to the same question of those long-term questions.
And if we could explore with the way Renaissance is structured right now, what we could do to streamline the cost of operation out there versus making such a, such a major shift.
We just cut the last year, how many staff members?
It was like five or so teachers.
And that, I mean, that was, that's a, that was a huge cut, that was like 20% more of your staff. And they're saying now, what a lot of the, in fact, the email, if it's the same one that you all got, the comment was really more about increasing, not reduction. So.
If you have school, it is a behavior, it needs someone.
It needs a level of service to deal with.
So I think we'll.
Yeah, at this point, we just need to, I guess, consensus whether we can, whether staff is prohibited from going forward. Ms. Bryant gives a thumbs up.
So you just want to give them an opportunity to explore and research?
Do some due diligence.
Yeah, and I certainly am, am one that I think we need to explore, I think we have a duty to, to our students who will be affected if we don't explore this.
I think you could learn some things through the exploration process that might benefit us.
Yeah, what issues do you worry about?
So, I think you've got consensus there.
So knowing what we went through, we're looking at the budget, the first run we've got will be showing about a $1.1 million deficit that we have to still overcome, work through. And that's assuming additional revenue from the, from the 400 or the additional FTE. Do you have time to look at the capital? I know you, you set a kind of a.
You know, I, I think the question I'm going to say is, it's, it is after 2 o'clock, we have a 3 o'clock certain, and we really got to get to code of student conduct, at the very least, because we have staff, I think, sitting here about that. So I'm asking the board, do you want to try and get through code of conduct and move to code of conduct and see if we can get that done, maybe in 30 minutes? And then shorten our lunch to a 30-minute lunch? Because I think if we, I think we should do that. So hold on capital and what we can do is, is see where we're at when we accomplish some of these others when we come back. So with that, is Regina still in the room? I know she's somewhere.
Kit is here.
Kit is here, I'm sorry. Kit, thank you for sending that information to the board yesterday too, because I kind of had that missing piece that I didn't have handy, so thank you.
Sure.
Do you want to start with the attendance discussion?
Yes, sir.
And I, I think you all were, Kit shared with you all the, the information, we thought it was important to get some feedback from teachers, although the timeline was kind of tight. So you had a chance, I think Kit shared that with everybody. We met with the principals of the high schools, I can share with you their recommendation. They have also viewed the results of the survey, their interpretation, maybe much like yours, was it was kind of conflicting, most of the teachers said that they, they didn't find the attendance policy effective, but they liked it, so, you know, so it was kind of a conflicted, conflicting statement there. There were a lot of statements in the attendance policy that we read, or in the survey that we read concerning the attendance policy. The bottom line is, from the principal's perspective, the policy is 15 years old, it was put in place to serve a purpose, and that purpose went away, the policy stayed in place. There's not a principal out there that doesn't want students in school 180 days a year and doesn't believe that the more they're in school, the better they will learn. However, with that being said, we would like to suspend the academic penalty for students until they've had a chance to, we as a district have had a chance to put together an attendance policy committee to review the current policy, to get some feedback from staff and to look at alternative methods to keep kids in school other than punitive measurements through their grades.
All in favor?
Is there a second?
There is a second.
Okay. I have a motion then by Ms. Deutschman to strike, and can someone give me the lines? Because I want to say.
Well, it's actually an attendance policy.
Oh, that's right, we are in a workshop.
We're going to go back to the thing, let's talk about where it's going to be.
So let's talk about that real quick and then I'll reconvene.
It's just a possible failure due to excessive absences, exceptions to.
I think it's on page 25.
It's actually on page eight and nine.
Eight, I had it before.
Page nine, wrote a numeral five.
Wrote a numeral five. So if we can, that's what I would propose, that we strike that for this year's code of conduct and in the interim, I think the other part of this is that there are other ramifications for students that miss school that are still in the code of conduct and still in statute, which is driver's licenses and students' study keys and a lot of other things that go along with attendance that are being done anyway. We're not deleting any of those, we're just dealing with this automatic failure which has become problematic, and nobody else that I can find is even doing it. So if, if you all are in agreement with that, we should go back into our meeting and just have our vote and.
And the only thing I would just add is, in the interim, not in the interim, in the coming year, as we're doing this, can perhaps, I always forget, high school directions, is that the, if you all maybe can look at some of the, how this intertwines with other things, and if there's something that needs to come out of that, fine, if not, leave it alone.
We certainly will, but we, as a, as a staff, we felt like the entire policy needed to be relooked at. Revisit all the things that we're doing for attendance.
So then what I'm going to do is, I'm going to recess the workshop for right now and reconvene the. reconvene the special board meeting and ask for a motion.
Okay, so I'll move again and we strike under, it's Roman numeral 5, all Roman numeral 5 under student code of conduct having to do with value due to excessive absence. Strike from this next year's code of conduct. And also direct Mr. Mullin, is it Mr. Mullin that we should be directing?
Yes.
To convene a committee to, to look at possible revisions or changes or whatever for the next school year. How does it do with the test?
I have a motion by Ms. Deutschman, a second by Ms. Powers, to strike from the code of conduct, section 5, high school attendance requirements for course credit, and also with direction to staff to convene discussion on next year's policy. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 5-0. Am I correct that that gives direction now for you all to put on the agenda for publication? So we can handle the, the, put that on for next meeting?
You can move to advertise right now.
Okay, then if somebody can give us the board a date, we'll make that motion.
We did make a submission with the possibility that that could happen. We'd like it to go to advertising so that we then can bring it back to the board on June 10th or 11th. I'm not sure what that date is, that Tuesday. It is June 10th is a Tuesday.
Okay, so I'll move that we advertise for a public hearing on June 10th for student code of conduct.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a motion by Ms. Deutschman, a second by Ms. Powers, to move to approve for code of conduct advertising for June 10th, 2014, for public hearing at, do we need to set the time? Public hearing.
It's going to be on time.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 5-0.
Can we call a lunch now and talk about the session again? What do you, what do y'all think?
Yeah, I'm going to go ahead and then, whoops.
You haven't done attorney leave.
Attorney, do you have anything? Superintendent?
No.
Mike?
Yeah.
Board members, can we hold ours till workshop?
Yeah.
Then I'm going to adjourn the meeting. Yes, we are reconvening the workshop for the moment?
Yes.
Yep. Yep, we are going to break for lunch and return at 3:00 PM upstairs to continue the board workshop at that time.
Yes.
Yes, at this moment.
What policy are we reviewing?